Yeah, it is.
Okay, good evening. Regular meeting of the City Commission for Tuesday, August 13th, 2019 to come to order. Please silence all your cell phones. City Clerk, or, and they can't hear me. Test, test, one, two, three, testing, one, two, three, testing, one, two, three. No, uh, still go up. Can you go up more? Testing, one, two, three, testing, one, two, three, testing, one, two, three. Getting thumbs up, alright. If they like that better, okay. Meeting's in order, that's, that's all I said so far. Alright, City Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Mayor Owen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Colodee.
Present.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now stand for the pledge and the invocation. Police Department Chaplain Cal McQuillan will give the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight for asking for guidance and for wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. We ask that you would fill us with grace as we make decisions that affect people beyond this room. And most of all, Father, continue to fill us with patience and with respect for one another. We ask in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Item three approval agenda, Cal, any changes over there?
Yes, sir, we have to remove item 10A to the next meeting. And then 10C, just take it out completely, that was taken care of previously. I'm having problem with my voice, so...
Yeah, he's hoarse.
No. Hello. Is this better?
Alright. Someone's hearing us out there, though.
Hello.
Is that better? Talk, talk more, Cal.
Hello. Okay. Uh, removing item 10A to the next meeting. And then item 10C, that is removed completely, it was taken care of previously.
Item A and 10C.
Thank you.
Alright. Keep us honest, if you can't hear us, please feel free to raise your hand. Commissioners, we, we tend to, as the meeting goes, we tend to lean back more, so make sure you eat the mics, they're here to, they're here to hear you as well as the video stream, so. First item up for a solar feasibility report, Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Michelle Valens, Capital Projects Manager for the city. Um, I'm pleased to be here tonight to share with you, uh, the first of our 18 buildings that we were approved, uh, to onboard the University of Central Florida for contractually in April to evaluate for solar feasibility. And that building is the City Hall Annex, uh, facility, which is just north of us here at City Hall. Um, this building, um, we wanted to again present to you, the UCF team is here right behind me, and I'll let them present the data. Um, we felt it critical to come to you now with that project beginning construction very soon. There are some things we need to consider, um, going forward from the report that you'll hear tonight on feasibility of solar. We'll have some structural upgrades that are likely going to be required, and you'll see on your consent agenda. Item F is the start of the change order that would be needed for schematic analysis for the structure to GLA architects. Um, so with that, um, I won't, I won't stand up here and share with you things about solar, I'll let the experts, um, do that. I have Donard Metzger and Keith Showalter, and you have, you'll have the report in front of you, um, but, from here.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, leave the documents up on the, uh, TV up there. Um, my name's Donard, I'm with the UCF team here. We did an assessment on the annex building next door. Uh, the building was built in 1920, uh, it has, or is going to have a, a total of about 11,800 square feet. Uh, key renovation details include things like keeping the exterior walls, uh, new construction inside, new floors, uh, new lighting and ventilation will be replaced as well. On the second page here, you see that, um, we took the utility billing data, uh, um, from your current solar, or your current annex here, or your current City Hall here. And what we're doing is, uh, looking at your renovation here and projecting the annual, annual energy usage for that building. And since, of course, there's no history on it, um, we're going to create it all ourselves here. Um, this has been done to provide a rough estimate of the, uh, energy usage and the profile for that building. Um, the profile is shown in figure one up there. Uh, it includes lighting, plug loads, uh, space heating, cooling, all of that. While the building use and condition square footage for the new annex will be similar to the current City Hall, the annex building is expected to be much more efficient than the current City Hall. Um, the estimated average annual energy use per square foot based on the City Hall here, which has those good, uh, energy efficient measures, would be around 120,000 kilowatt hours a year. Um, that is, uh, you know, once again, based on this City Hall here, which has this typical usages and the electric, uh, utility billing data, uh, did not include cost of usage for peak and demand. Therefore, uh, we couldn't really effectively determine the rate, so we just assumed a usage of about, um, or a price of about 10 cents per kilowatt hour usage. And so for the new annex, we're assuming that you'll, uh, probably, um, have about a $12,000, $12,000, uh, bill a year for that, for that building. Um, if you look at the actual graph that is up there on page three, um, you'll see that, uh, this is generated using the City Hall data, which is the annual electricity and consumption normalized to a typical meteorological year. The normalization process allows for the segregation of the cooling, the heating, and the base loads. Uh, an estimate using the simplified annual simulation indicated that the building, uh, with similar qualities, uh, proposed the annex, uh, might only use about 8.44 kilowatt hours per square foot per year. Um, that's 17% lower than the existing City Hall. So with those energy saving measures, uh, you'll lose about, lose about 17% of your bill. The fact that, um, about 40% of the capacity in the current City Hall has, uh, heat pumps, um, we would propose that the annex, uh, have all heat pumps and diminish that, that actual annual energy charge. Uh, improving that, uh, heating to the heat pump, um, would actually result in using something like eight kilowatt hours per foot per square year instead of like 8.44 kilowatt hours per year. Um, the solar feasibility study including a shading assessment, which essentially tells us how much energy that you can get from the solar system based on the actual conditions, the shading that exists up on that roof. Uh, we use 18 skylines, so we go around the roof, we place the device, we find out what the actual shading is on that roof, and we find out that you actually have a very good, uh, building for solar. Um, you have a 93% annual solar access on that building. So you'll get all of the energy that you would want to get out of that solar system minus a very small amount. Um, the potential solar power production was, uh, calculated using PV watts, that's a, uh, a federal program, um, designed by National Renewables Energy Laboratory. Uh, we put in where the building is and essentially what size the system is, and we can get an output from that which tells us approximately what that solar system would generate at that location. Okay, so, um, based on the City Hall billing data, estimates were done, uh, on the proposed annex and a simplified, less accurate building simulation is run. And once again, it comes up at about 120,000 kilowatt hours a year. Um, but if we were to get some of the heating changed over, you can get that down to about 100,000 kilowatt hour usage a year for that size new annex that's over there. Uh, putting a 50 KW system on top of that roof, uh, would probably take care of about 53 to 64% of the energy on that building. That system typically costs for a commercial building about a dollar 75 a watt to about $2 a watt. Um, the price that we use was $2 a watt to be conservative, and you see that what that system at 50 KW would generate on that roof is approximately $7,000 worth of energy a year at 10 cents a kilowatt hour. Uh, the actual payoff for that system, if we used a $2 a watt, which would be worst case scenario, would be about $100,000. Best case scenario, you get it down to a typical usage. If it's not difficult to install on that building, which I don't see any reasons why it would be difficult, could probably get the cost of that system down to somewhere around that dollar 75 a watt, which would be $87,500. Um, there is a weight issue that needs to be considered on that roof. Um, typical PV panels, uh, are about 2.3 pounds per square foot. If we add the racking, it gets up to somewhere around three and a half pounds per square foot. Uh, most typical buildings can handle that. Uh, I do believe that you're talking tonight about, uh, taking a look at that building and finding out, uh, through a professional engineer, GLA, I believe is doing the work, um, what that building can handle. Um, since a typical roof can handle that 3.4 pounds per square foot, everything's good, you could do normal attachments. If you find out you can't do a lot of attachments and it might need to be a ballasted system, that is allowed here in Florida, um, but typically, we need to see numbers in like eight pounds per square foot for your roof. Uh, and if you can handle that, then I, I would feel fairly confident that just about any company can get something installed up there on that roof. Um, but they would probably typically use like a combination system of direct structural attachments and if necessary, some small ballasting for that system. Um, looking at the cost, like we said, was a payoff of somewhere around 14 years, but, uh, if we can look at it a little more in terms of what the current prices are, your payoff would be much less than 14 years, maybe something on the order of 10 to 12, if the energy saving measures are put into place and, uh, you know, everything goes fine with the roof. Uh, so you're still just looking for the engineering there, and a ballasted system is possible on that roof if it's necessary, um, but, and a PE would have to certify that if it went up there. And I think that's all we have, that was quick for you.
Thank you.
So yes, um, if you have any questions of the experts, they're still here. Um, but again, in summary, I, I don't know if you heard all of that, um, it generally can offset 50 to 60% of our utility bill. And they calculated the plan utility bill, because that building doesn't exist, off of the loads from this building and then the drawings that we have for them to review. So offsetting $12,000 and cutting that in half is basically the savings we have. And what they're proposing as far as life cycle and payoff, that's calculating just against the solar panel, not the funds we also need to update the structure. So we have one more step to go through again on the schematic side with GLA, um, which we'll come back to you all for with the results before we make any leaps of procuring additional structure or even the panels, so, so more, Tom.
So, real quick, two things. Um, number one, something you slipped in right there at the end is important, I think, to note, that the payback, the 14-year payback and all those things, that's just off of the solar cost, not the, not any related construction costs, which we've seen numbers as high as double what the construct, what the actual solar cost is, so it's just important to keep in mind. Um, the, the other thing is, if, it, just to let the commission know, um, I had, uh, had a conversation in passing with, uh, uh, our new CEO over at the UC, uh, Mr. Bunch, and he had some kind of thoughts or observations on this, and I thought it would be great to hear from him. He, he's forgotten more about this than I would. So, um, I don't know if we want to hear from him first, or if we have questions for staff before, before we hear anything. He may have to add to this conversation about rooftop solar versus system level and et cetera, so. Preference from the commission. Joe, we'll, we'll hear from you first and then we'll ask questions, and...
Good evening, uh, Joe Bunch, General Manager, CEO of the Utilities Commission. Um, so when we had a joint meeting here in February, I mentioned, uh, very briefly, a number of topics we were considering was utility scale solar. Um, subsequent to that time, Tim Byerly, our Director of System Ops, has been engaged regularly with FMPA, Flour table, Flora Municipal Power Association. And in the September Utilities Commission meeting, we're going to be recommending, likely recommending approval of a long-term power purchase agreement. And, um, if we could slip to the next slide, I'd appreciate it. Do I do that from here, or? Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Tough slide to read, uh, from where I am, but, uh, FMPA, uh, this is their phase two, second solar project. Uh, there are some cities listed up there, we are one of them. And it lists, uh, amount of megawatts, um, that is, is going to be associated with this project. So it's utility scale, it's very different than what we're talking for rooftop solar. These are going to be on multiple sites, and it's literally hundreds of acres of solar panels. Um, so what you get at the utility level is, is economies of scale that get shared among all the participants. And, uh, there's going to be likely two sites, about a hun, just under 150 megawatts of, uh, power. Our portion of that, uh, is going to be 10 megawatts. Uh, it will go into service in, uh, 2023, so we're several years out. Um, and, uh, again, our commitment is likely going to be recommended at 10 megawatts of that 150 megawatts total. Um, just for reference, the big, uh, Florida Power and Light project that's out west on, uh, Route 44 is about half the size of what we're looking at here in the FM, FMPA project. So it's basically two, two fields about the size of that one. And the reason you build that size is if you go 75 megawatts or larger, it gets into different approval processes at the Public Service Commission. So pretty much everybody's building what you see going on out there, as will these sites be. Um, so as I mentioned, we're recommending, uh, that will participate, um, because it's longer than a four-year contract, it requires approval of both the UC Commission as well as the city, that's a charter requirement back in our charter. And, um, there is an option, now it doesn't have to be mutually exclusive or inclusive of what we were talking about just prior to this, because you could feasibly rooftop solar, and there's a potential that we could work in agreement out with the city that, uh, we estimate, looking at all your billing data, that we could provide all of the city's buildings, all of the load by way of this solar project, and it would be about 20% of our capacity. Obviously, we'd have to get our attorneys to sit down and figure that out, I don't think that would be a challenge. FMPA, uh, has offered, uh, to provide us with a template that's been developed for some other utilities and cities that have done this. Um, beyond the city, we would then work out mechanisms to embed that into our aggregate power supply already there. Um, and the, the, the pricing is extremely favorable on this. It's less than half our existing costs at the aggregate level. And, um, there are some other benefits that if we don't sign on to this one, we will likely not get, because there are tax breaks, they're set to expire at the end of the year. So folks like this and other projects are racing to try to get, um, things started prior to the end of the year so that both the builder, developers, and participants like us get the tax breaks. We would not get the same tax break if we were doing it as a utility commission, because we are, you know, a government entity. So, um, again, th- this is not meant to usurp what was previously presented, it gives the commission, the mayor, staff, things to consider. Um, again, you could do one, you could do both of these, but we've got the ability to say, when this is in service, with an agreement, the city of New Southern Beach has 100% of its power supply from solar renewable energy, and it would be by way of the, uh, FMPA solar project.
Thank you, thank you, Joe, I appreciate that. And that was, that was what was intriguing when he and I, again, kind of chatted in passing. And when he, when he mentioned that, because they were talking about some of the projects we're reviewing, that was intriguing to me, that the notion that with no capital outlet, um, being able to say that we're 100% solar, you wouldn't see it. And that's the, you know, one of the trade-offs is we wouldn't have that rooftop solar, uh, but we would be 100% solar serviced. And as you mentioned, we could do both, I mean, there may be projects at times when it makes sense to do both, so. Alright, with that, I'll open it up, any questions, comments?
But we would still be paying for the power, whether it's generated through fossil fuels or solar, we're still, except, there's a utility cost.
Correct.
Okay.
So what, what, what I would offer is, we could have our director, Tim Byerly, and somebody from FMPA sit down with your folks and compare the numbers. And you could compare A to B. How we work out the agreement, I think, will be very simple, but at the end of the day, you were, you're still going to have a power purchase just like you would if you had the solar rooftop. The solar rooftop would offset your, your, your current bill with a net. So, uh, and, and they are very well versed in how to calculate the nets and the returns. But this cost is going to be at or lower, uh, it would, it would be at or, or lower than where we are currently through power supply. And I don't know what the cost per kilowatts are on the solar generated, but they're calculating whatever the year, you know, rate of return is over that 12, 14-year period. So rather than try to figure it out here, what I'd offer is maybe our folks sit down with you and bring FMPA in, and they could get numbers and figure out what's best for the city, maybe one, the other, or both. Again, then, you know, this presentation isn't meant to offend the city of solar, uh, considering it's just not to give you options, another option to consider.
Does the UC currently have a, a buyback program, that if we generate more than we're currently using?
We do have the net metering.
Okay.
That's how this, would all set your bills in that level.
Other questions or comments?
Uh, I'm all for doing things on a larger scale, because it does work out, uh, in the long run, to be the most, the efficient way to do it. I've been involved in, in small-scale solar, I used to have one myself. It worked fine, it paid for itself. It was expensive. Uh, with regard to the annex building here, I just find the costs are, are so high to retrofit that existing structure that it is not a path that I would like to go down. I would much rather, uh, have a more, uh, universal approach to it. Uh, I, I do have to say that the study that they did complete far exceeded what I was expecting. that they did complete far exceeded what I was expecting. So I really congratulate them on doing the study, not just looking into the solar, but a number of the other components that you did look at in there. And I would hope that we would be sharing that with our design engineer to see if there are further cost savings we could make.
Any other comments or observations on this matter?
So a comment to his comment, we really don't know what the costs are yet. We don't know that the roof won't support the solar panels. We haven't been to a solar vendor to see what our true cost would be. There may be some incentives out there, or there, we may get them cheaper than what they've given us, the worst-case scenario. So until we do a little bit more legwork, we truly won't know if it's going to be cost-effective or not. So, I, I mean, the costs that they've given are just random, I mean, you know, they've taken estimates and best guess. So we truly don't know until they actually do the study on the building, to see what the roof loads are going to be able to hold, and then actually find a vendor and see what the, the true costs are going to be as opposed to what they are estimating the cost to be. So I've been, and no reflection on you at all, but I've been in discussion with members of the U C for two years now, and it's never seemed to want to go anywhere. That was before you, you got here, I understand that. But again, if we truly want to talk about sustainability, and whether you believe or not in, you know, seawater rising, or whatever, if we don't take some kind of steps now, I'm with this particular building, because it's now under construction, we're going to lose another opportunity that we may have in the future. And so I think it's worth at least investigating on whether or not what the true numbers are, and whether or not it, it will be cost-effective. You know, ten to fifteen years to, to get a return on your money, and then if you have another five years, just three kilowatt hours after that. So, I mean, there's some concern about budgets and, and future tax bases and stuff like that. So I think this could be an offset for us, or for future generations, that, that they could lower our actual tax base at some point in the future. So.
One more question for Mr. Bunch? Sorry, Mr. Bunch, giving you some exercise. So. So my question would be, the cost effectiveness per kilowatt hour versus a field, solar field, or putting the panels on each of the different buildings in our facility? And hopefully, you could, with your resources, find out which is the most cost-effective for us, and the timeliness of what it would take. After looking at the F P N L's field, it appears like it took almost two years to build that field. So if the U C does have a desire to do that, would it be smart to wait for us to build our own panels versus you supplying the power? Basically, all the other details, I'm sure you'd work out for us. I'm sure there, we have hurricane risk, and would that be a feasible thing to do? Or should we put our panels way out towards the west on our, on the piece of parcel we own west of ninety-five?
Go back to the map. The, the project that we will be buying to, and for some reason this, but at any rate, there's, there are three sites, and I believe we're going to have two at the end of the day. North central Florida, one tied to the Duke Transmission System, one tied to the F P N L Transmission System. So there's some diversity there. The geographical diversity adds to the fact that you get a cloud or a small storm, you don't lose the, a lot of the output just to do, just to do with a small system. Again, it's very different than small rooftop utility scale. Our cost that we're contracting for is well less than half our current aggregate cost of supply, and probably looking at twenty percent of the cost of what, you know, rooftop type cost per K W. But again, our, our proposition is, is different. It's not saying, what can we serve, save on this building? We have the opportunity to serve all of the, the load from about twenty percent of this capacity, which will go in place in twenty twenty-three. So it's, it's several years out. And we do still have the Western Utility Complex land, which, because of a lot of wetlands out there, we're thinking at least part of that should be set aside for some additional future solar. So this, this project, which we don't turn a spoon on, put a penny out, gives, gives benefits to the customers day one. The other ones, we would have to look at on a case-by-case basis, just like you are on this one, the capital outlay versus the return.
And, and my hope is to hear some objective advice from you. When Vice Mayor Hardman came up with the idea for the particular building, I thought it was great. And then hearing that the U C was going to get on board, then I figured, what's the timetable going to be for that? Is it worth waiting for? That's essentially my question.
And, and again, we, we could provide the folks in the room and your consultants and staff to help you figure out what that final approach is for the city. It's just another option to consider.
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
I mean, I think one thing to consider in that is, thank you, Joe. I think one thing to consider is, is a fourteen-year, fourteen-year payback, just on the panels, regardless of many design changes, cost of increased construction, et cetera. So from a, you know, is it worth it to wait type, type standpoint, I think would be one consideration. So good news is, we get to vote on each of these items separately. The, the one he mentioned, the kind of the largest scale projects, will be going through the U C Commission first, and then if it passes there, coming to us for, for a vote. And the changes on that building is item F on the consent agenda, which, if I were a betting man, I would bet will be pulled. There's some more discussion, and that will be when we kind of vote on how we, how we approach that. I think that'll give you the, the signal you need on that item. So, all right, item B, Mouring Field project update, Michelle.
I'm back. So we wanted to take the time to give you all an update on the Mouring Field project. Last Monday, August fifth, we had our second public meeting on a project that's been underway for almost two years. I know two of you could not join us. So I have in front of you the presentation that was given at that session. From a staff perspective, I thought it went really well. You know, we, we tried to fly higher with the second public meeting, instead of the first public meeting, just proposing the project. We walked through, we, we had a very unique agenda. It spirited from C C R. We took twenty minutes to do a presentation of informational purposes to the folks in the room. We sat the residents by neighborhood. It was kind of an elective optional thing for them. But we heard along the way between the first meeting and the second meeting, that certain neighborhoods had different feelings about their issues, because their view is different, their proximity to the Mouring Field is different. So seating them in that manner allowed us to then, towards the end, for twenty, twenty-five minutes, let them talk amongst themselves in a neighborhood setting, where they filled out a table questionnaire of five questions. And I have some data to share with you at the end of this, on what the results were. Again, trying to be objective about this in, in our steps going forward. But we had a host of folks there with us at the meeting. We had the D E P, oh, no, D E P wasn't in attendance, but the folks on the slide were, have been involved in this process over the last two years. We did have F W C in attendance, the Army Corps of Engineers, D M C, we had Belushi County Sheriff, and our own police department. Again, we shared with the residents that we were doing what we're doing this evening, that we're making a recommendation with this agenda item to place the project on hold until further public participation is received. We're hoping to do maybe another outreach meeting in November, possibly January. So stay tuned for more information on that. We showed them some existing conditions. You know, we talked a lot about where's the right-of-way and the channel, everything outside of that. A vessel can anchor within that. Trying to bring everybody up to speed, because a lot of the misunderstanding out there is just education, not knowing what the city's jurisdiction is versus federal. We know that there's pump-out services. We are only at the city marina. They have to come to you. There's an automobile solution. There's derelict vessels and at-risk vessels in the waterway as well. One sunk the weekend before, ironically, and it's still sitting out there, unfortunately, off the Brandon Center. We talked about growth management, and showed them over twenty-four years, how the boats have come to this area. From nineteen ninety-five, Google Earth imagery, there was zero boats. And now, from what we see, there's three areas, and there's twenty-eight boats. So charting that data, and we broke it apart by location of where they're starting to gather, there is, there is a trend. Again, how does Mouring Field help with growth management? We went there and told them, you know, the, the rules of the Mouring Field, and how boats can't raft together, and therefore less boats fit into a certain size area. We talked about Fort Myers, and how they're, they have a successful Mouring Field project that's been established for the last thirteen years. There's a view of their, of their field. You know, very similar style of geography, a narrow channel with residential neighborhood. And then we answered two bold questions for them, the revenues and expenses, and will the project be self-sustaining? And then lastly, won't boaters move outside of the Mouring Field? So we shared the estimated expenses. We know that, roughly speaking, depending on the number of anchors we put in, we'd have somewhere of a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars each year from an expense perspective. So we'd have to generate at least fifty thousand dollars to offset that expense. And then finding the sweet spot here, from a capacity perspective, with, we, we were trying to figure out what's a number, what number of mooring balls would we need in order to break even, and what feels right for our city. And it's somewhere between twenty and thirty-five with different arrangements. But again, showing them a perfect example of the Mouring Field, and if they do anchor elsewhere, the elsewhere, which is real to many of us, is Chicken Island. The, the boats will likely move there. We're proposing to put the, the current Mouring Field at Commodore Island. So we showed them graphically that across from Bouchelle, at Chicken Island, there's ten boats on the screen. They're anchored today. If you implement a Mouring Field, you are prescribing the number of boats that can fit in that area. And in this case, given the size and the setbacks, you could only fit seven in that area. No more than seven, because the channel is to the west, and then the setbacks are there to the south and the east. In summary, again, we know pump-out services, we need more enforcement, and derelict vessels do exist, and they need to be addressed. So we proposed some solutions, some pros and cons, next steps. This is the meat of what I'm here to tell you about tonight, is the breakout session questionnaire and the data. I know there's a bunch of pie charts in front of you there, just some graphical help there. But I'll just read you some of the, some of the percentages that we have. We had a hundred and twenty-seven people attend this session. It was a good turnout. We had a hundred and seventeen responses submitted on the surveys. Forty-two percent of those folks were from Riverside Drive. The other areas was Bouchelle Island at sixteen percent, Commodore Drive at eleven percent, and then thirty percent from other areas of the city. Over sixty-five percent of them do understand that jurisdictionally, there are limitations out there, and if left unmanaged, it will remain as is out there. There will be very little that the city can do, being that the jurisdiction is not ours. The second thing we did was asked them to rank in order of priority their, their number one through five issues that they'd like to see improved. The number one improvement is the derelict vessels. That is their number one. Second in line was the pump-out services. Let's increase the frequency and the enforcement. And then third was better placement of anchored vessels for safe navigation. In summary, we asked very bold questions about, do you feel the project can financially sustain itself? And, and we unfortunately received eighty-one percent that know they'd like more information. So regardless of if they supported or not, the financial part was kind of lacking in support. But forty-seven percent of folks that the, filled out this survey, do not support the Mouring Field this time. There was twenty-eight percent undecided, and then twenty-three percent I D S. So with that, again, staff's recommending to put the design efforts on hold until we have our, our other sessions, perhaps in November or January. We do recommend, though, at this time, to bring forward two future agenda items. One would be to procure a pump-out boat. We do have access to seventy-five percent funding grant from Clean Vessel with the E P. So again, all the details behind procuring that boat could come to you at a later date. And we will also support ranking a recommendation to acquire a police boat. We can get the boats now. We can start implementing procedures, policies, and getting better at managing and having a presence in the waterway. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. That's my presentation for you.
Thank you, Michelle. And good job on the presentation and, and that night, handling all the questions and observations. So good job on this project overall. What questions, comments do we have on this? And I think this one, staff is looking for some direction. So if nothing else, at least, offer opinion.
I do have concerns about the project. In fact, I don't support it, just to be clear on that. Biggest concern I have is the derelict boats, because you studied very, very well, and the report was really done very well, I must say. I wasn't there, and yet I know everything that happened. So that's a, that's a good thing. That, there's a problem in that we have a, a good stretch of water that's, that's north of Canal Calori, between the, the wetlands area, the mangroves, and the island that's out there, that has had derelict boats in it for years. I've seen up to ten boats out there. Now, I think it's four, last time I looked. Doesn't address that. I have a number of friends that have large boats, and they give me their opinion all the time. And they say that the derelict boats that are out there now aren't just going to throw up their hands and tie up at a mooring ball. They're just going to move somewhere else on the river. And with our restrictions on how far we can enforce the derelict boat issue, it would not cover that area. So I just think we're moving the, the problem from one place to another.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi. So you wanted in, you're asking for, we're putting the Mouring Field on hold, but you're asking for going forward on a police boat and a pump-out boat due to the possible funding?
No, those are just recommendations for future agenda items that we would, that are a spin-off of this project. Yeah, those are just approval tonight as the individual efforts unless, just more of a guidance step. If you support that recommendation, that we can pursue those efforts, we will, and we'll come forward with actual hard costs for carrying the boats.
So without looking at any hard costs, I certainly like the idea of having a police presence out on the water. We have a lot of problems. Clearly, the Sheriff's Department and everyone else, F W C, is not able to get all the issues, and we're stuck. Our people, our residents, dealing with all these derelict vessels. And there's also, I don't know if we have the ability to possibly take it in fine, no wake, and, you know, speeding in no-wake zones. We can make enormous amount of money if we wanted to do that. We see it daily. The pump-out boat, I have a question about that. If we did not have the Mouring Field, and we had a pump-out boat, were, are we still able to use that pump-out boat and go up to these vessels that are moored out there and charge them to do it? Can we indirectly, and I understand they don't have to do it, but maybe we can somehow indirectly encourage them to do so?
Yep. It's encouraged. And again, those boats need it the most, because they're anchored out there. They are very large, and many of them, which can't even get into the marina if they wanted to get pumped out.
So the, the Mouring issue, the Mouring issue, you know, this started as a pretty innocent idea. It seemed like a good idea at the time. The thing that I'm concerned most about now is the amount of staff time that we're spending on this. We have a lot of issues going on in this community. And you guys and staff, the time we're demanding on you is incredible. And I just don't know if continuing to spend this amount of time has enough upshot, even getting, if everyone agreed that the Mouring Fields were a good idea. I just don't know if spending three more months and six more months, when I look at this, I'm just not sure that the cost of benefit is even there. And that's why I asked, if we got the pump-out boat, I would probably prefer to move in a direction of getting a pump-out boat, boat, and getting that, or spending staff time on how our police can help patrol the waters with a pump-out boat, than spending a lot more time on a Mouring Field, that it's not required to be used. And I just don't think that the upshot of it is all that great on staff's time. Got a lot going on. So, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify one thing, what you said real quick. You, you said that you couldn't charge, because I guess what the grant we're getting for the, for the boat, that we couldn't charge for the pump-out services?
I understand that it's, it's a no-charge-max fee that we could charge would be five dollars.
Gotcha. And we can't require it either.
Right. If it's called for, we have to go to them because of the grant.
Yeah, yeah. I wanted to do some clarification. Thank you, Mayor. Regardless, if we do not have the Mouring Field, and we get a pump-out boat with the help of fees, grant money, the most we can charge for the pump-out is five dollars. Okay, thank you. I'm glad I got that. I did not understand that. Thank you.
Again, it's all for environmental purposes. That's why there's, it's not a money-making business.
But seventy-five percent of the ongoing.
The D E P's paying for it.
Yeah. But seventy-five percent of the ongoing operations of that boat.
Right. Yeah.
Staff and maintenance.
And staff and maintenance. Correct.
Would be paid for.
Over five years.
Over five years. What about on year six? You reapply. Okay.
You reapply. You reapply?
And I think the water quality issues that we're dealing with would still support, would certainly garner my support for this pump-out boat.
Okay. Vice Mayor, just sound in.
So, I'm at the opposite end of the table, so I do support the mooring field. And I, but I, and I want to thank you for the excellent job that you did the other night. It was, you and the other speaker were very informative and to the point, and I think the audience appreciated the information that they got, because they received a lot of information, and it was good information, and it came across a wide gamut of, of issues that were out there. I do support, though, putting it on hold, because I, I think there was a lot of information from the first meeting that, that we hadn't thought about, and that, you know, that we were looking into. I think we got a lot of information from the second meeting that will, will help us to go in a better direction at some point in the future, whether that future's in a couple of months or a couple of years, at least, you know, we now have some groundwork for that, and we can see what's going to be available out there in the future. My, one big thing for the mooring field was for the environment and for the pump-out. So I, you know, tremendously support the, the pump-out, because, I mean, you hear all day long about the lagoon, you hear about the environmental impact of sewage, we're dumping raw sewage, not even out of septic tanks, but straight out of the boat into the river. And if we don't get some kind of control on that, I don't think the police chief wants to be in the pump-out boat. I think he's looking for a, he wants a separate boat, though, so. So whatever we can do to, to create a, a presence out there on the water, a police presence for enforcement of that and other issues, and then for the environment, you certainly have my support. And I thank you for all the time that you have put in on this.
Okay. Mr. Sacks, last but not least on this issue.
Yes. Michelle, thank you so much for your hard work on this issue. A mooring field can be an excellent maritime feature for many cities, bays, islands, other seaward features, but not particularly for this city. I think there are many constraints, including size, that would be very difficult for us to have even a twenty-moring field. As far as environment goes, the boats that we see out there currently are not going to move very far. They move, they may move around Snapper Cut, they may move north towards Chicken Island, they move, may move even further north towards the Coast Guard Base and park illegally. They will not require pump-out boats. They will do the same thing with their five-gallon buckets and dump them over the side. So only those that comply and wish to use our field would probably use our pump-out boat. Then there's the addition of added boats. I don't know what that does for the environment. Most sailboats and motorboats that stay in the water use bottom paints. Those bottom paints are extremely toxic. They're copper-based, and the ones that aren't copper-based slough off, most of them slough off after a while, and they end up hurting the environment. So we're just adding more boats that may be compliant to those that aren't. And that speaks to the constraint issue. We have a beautiful little bend in the river. I'd hate to see that constrained with even more boats that will basically cause a State Road forty-four or an I-95. This is basically a maritime commercial highway. I'm sorry, I'm speaking to you, but I, I want everybody to know my feelings. I do support these type of features, but for our city, it's just not going to work. You're currently seeing at least ten derelict boats out there now. So picture, let's say those boats were in compliance and in a field. Add those compliant boats along with at least half the ones that aren't complying, surely they're going to stay here. It's a wonderful place to stay, get in your skiff, park at our floating dock by Brandon Center, or AOB, or somebody's private land. And then there's the fact that simply, a lot of it lies in Zone Two, which are the people that I represent. I'm sure people who are sailors do appreciate the clanging of stays and, and other sheets that are, you know, that make it sort of romantic, and it's nice to see a few sailboats. But if we clog it up, I don't think it'll be as pretty to, to overview that mangrove. And another serious concern is the danger. As I've said, it is a highway, and I have seen a large barge crash into the north shore by the AOB. And I, God forbid, hate to see a large-scale, let alone a small-scale accident with a jet ski in that area. And it's quite conceivable, if we split up that mooring field and have different areas, we're just congesting the whole area. As far as police, I'd love to see more of them on land. Of course, I'd like to see them on sea as well. Support a police boat, but not at this time, until we have the proper amount of police force. And then, speaking to the environment, and I'll be through. It is an area for calving, for training of dolphin. I'm very concerned about the environment for them, and for local people who want to be on light craft, stand-up paddleboards, kayaks, it'll be a very dense highway. So at this time, I would like to see it tabled indefinitely, because frankly, if you look at all the other aspects, the financials, we really haven't figured that out yet. And I know you've worked hard on it, but it just doesn't seem to fit. It's more like putting a nine-size foot in a seven-size shoe. But thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, couple, couple things I had for you. First, points all well-made. For me, what changed, kind of throughout this consideration was, and maybe it was a misunderstanding on me, but I think the regulatory environment actually changed while we were kind of in the middle of this. My understanding upon first voting was that we could regulate a certain area outside of the field, and so that if we had enough presence that we could kind of control a larger area, turns out, you can't. It's basically just what's in the field, and there's really nothing stopping someone from going ten feet outside of the field. And at that, I just don't know if we can control enough of the area to stop that from happening. That's what the major concern is. So that leads you to the financials. You know, I don't know if the financials will work, not that I don't trust the numbers, I know we computed them right, but I don't know if the demand would really be there if someone can just go ten feet away and park, and whether or not we can have enough mooring spread around to, to control that. I'm hopeful the state would, would reverse some of their, some of their actions to make it where a mooring field does kind of regulate a broader area, and that actually, I think, would help, but that's obviously beyond us. So, three things I did want to just talk through though, real quick. Derelict, we, that was a major concern that, that was lingering, haven't heard that discussed a lot. How do we solve this? So that boat went down August 5th, how long has it got to be there? What's the steps? Can we do anything to expedite that? Is there funding? What do we do about the derelict boats that make it where it doesn't have to sit there for a year or two before we pull it out of the water? Sorry to put you on the spot, Chief.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so, the Police Department has probably the most experience with the derelict vessel issue. It is a long, and as, you do anything with the state government level, it's a very tedious project in order to get those vessels, number one, legally designated as derelict, and then, number two, to secure the funding to have it removed. I'll give you an example on this vessel that's down here, just south of South Causeway Bridge. We had to have divers come down just to be able to get to the boat and try to identify who the current owner is. We peeled back several layers of Florida registration stickers until we found one that was several years old, and so now we're backtracking that person who sold it to someone else who sold it to someone else. Long story short, we moved forward in, in the idea of what it would cost us as a city to remove that vessel, and we have a quote for seven thousand dollars. The quotes that we've gotten depend on the size of the vessel and the condition in which it's derelict at the time, particularly the ones that are sunk, is anywhere between seven and ten thousand dollars to remove that. They're talking with the city manager and, and talking about how we would secure that funding to do that, but again, that would probably have to come out of general fund if we were, want to remove those boats very quickly. For me, as a, as a resident and, and the police chief, I subscribe to the broken windows theory of policing, that in the longer that, that those type of vessels remain there, the more it sends the message to the rest of the boating public to bring your junk here and let it sink, because somebody else will take care of it. This is a problem that if we don't do something, whether it's a mooring field or, or some positive step to, to address this particular issue, it will get worse, I promise you that.
Sir, I couldn't agree with you more, well said. So that one that sunk on August 5th, help me understand, is that, what, what is the process to go from? I mean, sunken boat equals derelict in my mind, but you're saying there's, there's more to that process. We have to certify it as derelict, find the owner. How long, if, if, if funding wasn't an issue, blank checkbook, from August 5th to pulling it out of the water, what does that time bring?
We could pull it out now. I, I, I mean, the, the idea that if the city was going to pay to remove that vessel, and I would defer to the city attorney on whether or not it would cost us any liability to take someone's, whoever that person may be?
Yeah.
Of the owner's boat, and I'll just be honest with you, that, that right now, nobody wants it because it's, it's underwater. But the instant that we take it out of there, and then we destroy it, or raise it, or whatever, then someone's going to say, wait a minute, I was going to come get it, you took my boat?
Yeah.
And, and now I'm going to sue you for it. And the vessel that nobody would give you ten cents for is now worth amazingly thirty or forty thousand dollars.
Correct.
So I, I think there, at some point, in, in order to solve the problem, again, this is me talking here, I think you have to sometime ask for forgiveness instead of permission. I know that's not the.
Is there like a carry-up, please? Okay, so I, I appreciate your candidness, I'm just really, because that's, that's kind of what the, the public is asking me that question, I didn't have an answer. And so I, that's a, that's a good answer, and, and go ahead.
There's also a hierarchy of, of what the, the states, particularly FWC, what they look at in terms of derelict vessel removal. Those vessels that were derelict through storms, natural disaster, hurricanes, things like that, they rise to the top of the list, and the stuff that's just abandoned and derelict kind of goes to the bottom of the list. And then with everything else, it was a certain pot of money, and the ones that they, they deal with are at the top of the list, and the ones at the bottom sometimes don't get dealt with at all.
Okay. While I have you, before you go, kind of in the same vein, but another issue that I've heard brought up routinely is the dinghies out in front of the Brandon Center. There, there, some consider them blight, some even wonder if they're working. What's the, what's the rules and regs on that? What can we do, what can't we do? And does the mooring field help in any way? Does it hurt in any way? What are your thoughts on that?
I don't think the mooring field helps or hurts in any way. I think the Brandon Center dockage there is, is a separate issue. As I understand it, there's a certain amount of time that, that vessels can pull up there to do whatever business they need to do. We monitor that, and when we find the ones that are out there for longer than the period of time that they're allowed, we try to track down those, those owners and either remove those vessels or issue trespass warrants.
And it's that way because it was grant-funded, right? There's only certain, there's, some rules we can put in place and some we can't because of the funding source that we use to build that. Is that a correct statement?
As long as we are consistent of applying these, these rules, it's no problem. So if we want to kick them out, we have to kick everybody out.
We could be more stringent, though.
Yes.
What is that timeframe now? Do you know?
I think what we agreed to was twelve hours, as long as they weren't there overnight.
Okay. Gotcha.
Question for the chief?
Just one piece of information to add. So Florida Fish and Wildlife has information about removing derelict vessels, and they require you to get a permit from one or both agencies, which is DEP and Army Corps of Engineer. Kind of flies in the face of chief's suggestion, but failure to apply and be granted required permitting before a project begins could result in state or federal fines and penalties being assessed. So I don't know the amount of those, I will find out. And also the timeframe involved with pulling a permit, those would be relevant factors as well, for me.
So, let me finish on a company.
Go ahead.
So, so my thought is this, mooring field, we can, we can, we can put down on ice as long as we'd like to put it on ice, until I think the, the regulatory environment changes. I don't think it solves any of our problems. I think these two issues are way bigger, way more visible to residents than, than the mooring field issue. I support the pump-out boat, by the way. I would like to see the twenty-five percent number, make sure John can pay for it somehow, but, so I, I think having a plan, if we're going to dedicate some staff time, I think dedicating it to those two issues, and having a plan to make sure, the boat sinks on August 5th, we can expect it to be pulled up by, you know, X date. This is the typical timeframe for the permitting, and da-da-da-da-da, and here's the cost, and having that as a kind of quantifiable, normal thing, I think would be a, a much higher priority for me. And then the Brandon Center thing, I think, again, I look for staff's recommendation on what can we do, because I've heard that just about every time I walk in the Brandon Center, I hear about that, so. Mr. Sacks, you have anything else to add?
Just a few questions for you, sir. According to the Department of Homeland Security, our police force now has the ability to board and remove those boats under our own city's authority?
Remove the derelict vessel?
Yes.
Again, I think the, the permitting process is, is the way to go on this. The permitting process will go a little faster when the state knows that it's the city that's going to pay for it. There really won't be too much of a problem issuing the permit, it's who's going to pay for it. In terms of what the, the city police force can do out there, we can enforce pretty much any state regulation that's out there. For, for example, we secured trespass warrant authority from the state to do Chicken Island when we had some homeless folks out there. We also can do boating safety. In terms of the, the pump-out issue with the, the raw sewage going overboard, we'd be able to do the same thing that the, the state does in terms of putting the, the duck around the Y valve and around the boat to find out if raw sewage is leaking, and then either secure that and/or issue citations for that. There's not too much out there that we can't do in terms of what's in the city boundaries.
It's my assertion that after Matthew and Irma, the boats that ran aground and foul, it seemed like the FWC kind of dragged their feet. They're not here to defend themselves, unfortunately, but it seemed like a very long process and that they would not act. They had the authority to remove those boats, it never happened, and we got to this position today because we have so many derelict boats now in state waters that are not being policed, and now it's being forced upon us. Is, is that a correct statement?
Partially. The, the, the holdup is not really here with the local FWC folks that we see out there every day on the boats, they're very helpful.
Yes.
And they want to do the right thing. The, the problem comes when, with the folks in Tallahassee.
I agree.
Who are obviously three and a half hours removed, and this isn't on their priority string.
Yes. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Chief. Sorry to put you on the spot for all those good, good responses. All right.
Just one last comment. I, I would rather, instead of putting the money into a mooring field, establish a fund to remove derelict vessels. It seems to be much more cost-effective visually pleasing, and I know from running up and down there, having some of these boats in, in, in harm's way is not a good thing, especially at night.
Yeah, okay. So I think we need a, we need a motion on this. I'd say the motion really just needs to be on the mooring field itself, and then I think staff is, all the other items as far as, you know, you've heard some good direction on that, I think if you want to bring some of those things back, I don't think we have to incorporate that in the motion just for simplicity, so. We have a motion to accept staff's recommendation on the mooring field project.
To move.
Second.
City Clerk, screen color roll, please.
Commissioner Colodey? Commissioner Sacks?
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
So the mooring field project is on hold.
That was not the recommendation, was it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not understanding that, can I change my vote?
Yeah, sorry, I, I should have clarified that, that staff recommendation. Yeah, so that, that was the staff recommendation.
Recommendation to hold, to table?
Yeah, to table, definitely, yeah.
I'll vote yes. Sorry.
Change that, do we have to recall it? Is that procedure?
Uncharted territory. If, if the commission has no objection?
Objection, I'm changing the vote. Please record it as a yes vote from Commissioner Sacks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next item up is public participation. Three-minute time limit will be imposed, timer will be up there. This is your chance to address the commission on any items on the consent agenda, administrative lineups, new business, if anything under item number seven, and anything under ordinance's first readings and boards and commissions, remembering that we pulled item 10A and C. Yes, ma'am?
Susan Nealon, 608 Faulkner Street. I'm here to talk about ordinance number forty-six dash nineteen. What that ordinance is about is, it's about US One, and there's some properties that are really difficult to sell because to meet the landscaping requirements, and to meet the parking requirements, it almost deflects. So for example, there's an Italian restaurant right above, um, Blackbeard's there, that they can't sell it, and it would be stupid to tear down the building, just doesn't make sense. So that was the intent of the ordinance, which I think is fabulous. I do not like the wording, however, because it's more or less giving away all of US-1 corridor. So, the citizens were really upset about Route 44 and what it looked like, and I don't wanna give up US-1. So Brian and his staff have done an outstanding job with the tree ordinance, with the density, and the latest one with the construction is beyond belief, and it's just an outstanding job. I think we should go back and look at the wording, and allow properties such as that Italian restaurant to have an exception, but not give away US-1 corridor. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Susan.
Kathy Jo Douglas, 1200 South Riverside Drive.
We just voted it down, didn't we?
I know, I'm gonna thank you for it, it's gonna be pretty quick.
Okay.
Plus, I have more to say, but-
All right.
I usually do. Anyway, my na- did the three minutes start? Darn. Um, first, I'd like to thank Mayor Owens, the commissioners, and the city staff members for making the decision to table the proposed mooring field. We believe you have made a wise decision, and we hope you will ultimately decide that building the mooring field or fields would not be in the best interest of the city. Um, two points on the workshop, for future workshops, if we have another workshop on the mooring field. Um, we'd like for you to include, just like you do the three minutes here, we'd like that at future workshops, like maybe you could bring the timer, or have somebody time you, so that everybody would have a chance, who wanted to, to speak for three minutes. The other thing is the voting, maybe hand voting, 'cause like, one out of six people at my table actually figured out how to text. I mean, you know, these are the people we're dealing with, you know, I, me included, so. Anyway, as far as the voting goes, um, and, uh, so I'm not gonna go over all the facts about the mooring field since you've put it on hold, but, um, just reiterating that you, since the, um, uh, city cannot control the boats outside of the mooring field, within 100 feet of the mooring field, it's a moot point. So you discussed that, and I won't go over that again. As far as, uh, purchasing the pump-out boat, and hiring an employee to run it, it's a good idea, and I can see why it's exciting, but you might, uh, we would like you to consider maybe interviewing, or having somebody going around to the boats out there, because most of them, or a lot of them, I, I would guess, have porta-potties, they don't even have like a pump-out system. So I don't know how to deal with that, we need to deal with that, but that might be something you could think about and consider, because it's not gonna be just easy, like plug it in the boat. Um, um, the other thing is, uh, that you've discussed is a, um, police boat, and my only questions would be, um, what ordinances are in place now for the policing of our waterway, and how would the police boat be used? I love the police, I always think you'll protect me if I'm in trouble, I'm a huge lover, but what all can we do on the water? Are the laws the same on the water as the land? I'd love to have those questions answered with regard to the police boat. Um, and then one last thought, and, um, it's in all my research, which I did a lot, I believe, and I could get you some information, that Florida Fish and Wildlife has a grant program with regard to removal of derelict boats. Something to look into, I don't know 100%, but I could send you some information on that if you'd like. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have it.
Hi. Good evening, Jay Pendergast, 1500 South Atlantic. Uh, I'm here to talk about something that's not on the agenda, and probably not on the radar screen, but, um, I really am taught concerning about, I'm concerned about, you know, basically perception and, and, uh, first impressions, and how important they are to our community. And you know, when you're driving down 95, Ormond has Granada, Port Orange has Dunlauton, Edgewater has Indian River Boulevard, and we have State Road 44. If you wanna know why you're getting tractor supply stores, auto parts stores, convenience stores, maybe it has to do with the name of the street. I mean, 44, State Road 44, perfect place for a tractor store. I, I, I strongly suggest that the gateways to our city be named, and I was going to suggest that State Road 44, uh, be turned to, uh, be referred to as the Greenway. Uh, last year, the citizens voted to acquire the environmentally sensitive lands of the Turnbull Creek, which I think is great, and we should also reinforce, there's other potential green spaces along State Road 44. Um, and I see the clock ticking, so I won't go into that, but I just would like to see consideration for renaming State Road 44 into something that's more, uh, reflective of our community. And the other street that I have a really big problem with is, um, North-South Dixie Freeway. First of all, New Smyrna doesn't have a grid. We've got streets going every direction, avenues going every direction, where the heck is north, where the heck is south? And then Dixie Freeway? That sounds so Jim Crow to me. I mean, really, how can we have a street with a name like that in this day and age? I think it should be changed to Ridgewood, so that it would be com- compatible with our neighbors to the north and the south, and I think that, I'm just offended by the name Dixie Freeway, and I would like to see the commission look into these roads and the possibility of renaming them. Okay? And thank you.
I thought he was gonna suggest Pendergast Way for the first 44 there for a minute, but-
Jay Way.
Yeah, Jay, Jay's Way.
No. That's Pendergast Park.
Uh, there you go.
He already had it, didn't he? He did, he did think about it.
All right. Others for public participation.
Curtis Hages, 620 South Riverside Drive. One thing I wanted to ask the, uh, police chief over here, was, you know, with the people out on the boats, I know you probably don't know everyone out there individually, but do the people that are on the boats, do they have their child molesters or anything like that? Do they have to, um, uh, stay where they're living at when they're in a boat? No, they don't. So they don't have the same rules that they do if they moved into a neighborhood with children, correct?
Talking about sex offenders?
Yeah, sex offenders.
Uh, we're talking about the sex offender-
No, it's to people on the boats, 'cause we don't know anything about those people out there. They could just move out on the boat and just start living there, and we don't have a clue about anyone out there. That's what I always wondered about, people living out there in the water.
Yeah, talking about sex offender registry, but how does it apply when it went on water?
Anyone living on the boats out there, we don't know a thing about 'em, so-
Yeah.
But that's my biggest thing.
It's a good point.
And I don't have a problem with the name of the street, neither.
All right. Thank you. Chief can talk to you more about that offline if you, if you wanna tell him, it's a, it's an interesting point, though. Others for public participation. Going once, going twice. Seeing none, will close public participation. Next item up, consent agenda. Remember the commission was to pull any item from the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
F.
Yeah, I thought so. Any others?
Yeah, I got-
I was just coming off-
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Any others?
No, I believe that's it.
Commissioner Sacks?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. G?
Item D.
D?
And item G.
Okay, that's what I thought. Vice Mayor here.
B.
B. Okay, so to clarify, we pulled item B, D, F, and G. To have a motion to adopt, uh, first of all, yeah, no, I hadn't, I hadn't seen it. Motion to adopt consent agenda, items A through M excluding item B, D, F, and G.
I'll make that motion.
In a second. We'll color roll, please.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Okay, first up, item B, Commissioner Hartman, I believe, pulled that one.
Um, I just have a brief comment, that if we're going to put in fire hydrants, and then deed them over to the UC, I think the UC should be responsible to maintain them.
Um, as a matter of fact, uh, this subject was brought up, uh, Friday when the mayor and I met with the CEO, uh, and the chairman of the UC. Um, they're looking into it, uh, since we did system deed, uh, all that system to them, they should be responsible for it, so, they'll get back with us on it.
My one comment, thank you.
Okay. Uh, there's a motion on item B. Move to approve.
Second.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Item D, Commissioner McGurk.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, fellow commissioners, um, I wanna point out that I think, and I feel pretty strongly that, the determination of the city auditor is our responsibility. So, we hire the manager, the attorney, the clerk, and the city auditors are really our auditors as a checks and balance. So what I would propose is that we take the final two that the selection committee came up with, have them present to us, and we make the recommendation on which auditors we're gonna go with.
Okay. I actually had the same question when I saw that this item came up, so I, I don't disagree with that. 'Cause there, as you pointed out in one of our other meetings, they, they are our auditors, they, they work for us, so.
How would you like to implement that?
Well, I think we have staff set up at a future meeting, a meeting with the auditors, both will present to us, and then we can take action, we can do it before the next city commission meeting possibly, but I'll leave that.
Well, we'll try to see if we could get you, uh, presentations on, uh, the next meeting, if not, first meeting in September.
And that's all together, them presenting, or individually us?
No, I think that they, I'm sorry, what, what we've done in the past is, the auditors will come in individually, present, they're gonna leave the room, and we'll make a decision and pick one of the auditors.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to support the request of, uh, Commissioner McGurk.
One second.
Okay. Is that enough clarity in the motion for everyone, or any other? Okay. Not, city clerk, if you can color roll on that, please.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up. Commissioner Colletti, next item, what was yours, F?
As I explained earlier, uh, I do not believe the installation of solar panels on top of the, uh, Annex Building, which I hope will get a better name, uh, does not warrant spending another $10,000 to, uh, $10,840 to, uh, basically ascertain that it's not the proper thing to do. So, uh, I myself cannot support that.
Any other comments on that? Go ahead, question, Mitch.
I have a tremendous concern with the cost to benefit on this. While it does not look good right now, I can at least support getting all the facts before I make a determination, so, um, I think I'm gonna vote yes on this to get all the deter- all the determining factors I'm gonna need to make the decision.
Can I ask Michelle just one quick question? Is there a chance, I mean, it seems like I, I heard the, the gentleman from UCF saying, sorry, I should've asked this earlier, is there a chance that we would spend this 11 grand, let's round it, and they come back and say, "Yep, roof can totally support it, there's no additional construction costs, it's just basically the system cost," or is that a far out chance?
So that's a question for me on the structure.
Yeah.
GLA, GL, so we did share the report with the architect.
Yeah.
They aren't alone in this effort.
Yeah.
They were on the call with our, with the team from UCF, as well as ourselves, went through a draft report, and based on what they heard from that particular meeting, is what put this change order together. They mentioned needing to make some changes to mechanical equipment-
Okay.
-um, as well as knowing the pounds per square foot, and what they were calculating now for that roof to carry. So they're pretty confident it's gonna be definitely over 100,000 on the structure. They, they told us upwards of 230,000, so if you even cut that in half, let's just, let's just lower the number there for you, if it helps a little bit, is structurally, we're looking at a three-figure increase likely.
So what I think you're gonna say is, we're pretty confident it's gonna be at least a, at least 100K. Cost of the system was a 14-year payback, and it was about 100K, so we're at 28-year payback if we put it at 200K.
If you put it all together, yeah, logically, that's how I would think about it.
System's gonna fail before 28 years. So, I, I, I don't really think it's worth spending 11 grand.
But this, this item also covers the HVAC system that they're looking at schematics also, right?
They would be up, again, UCF made the recommendation to address the heat pumps, so we'd have to revise the mechanical system.
It's just not the solar, it's also the mechanical system that they're gonna evaluate, and then we'll have some true numbers, you know, and it's gonna cost you $10,000, so.
Mr. Mayor, question for staff, for my colleagues. Uh, in light of the fact that Mr. Bunch just made a brief presentation on what the UC might be doing for solar, how would, how would we consider that in light of the fact that we would consider 10,000 for feasibility for just the one building? Uh, I, I did hear, uh, Vice, uh, Mayor's comment about additional features, but I wonder, should we wait, or should we go ahead with this feasibility study?
I think we have to make a yea or nay. To, to avoid slowing down this project, we can't wait for that to come to full maturity, so we're gonna have to make an independent decision on this. I just worry us have that in the back of our heads, that whether or not we do this, that's something that'll be coming at us, but there's a chance we get to 100% solar without putting on every, on every rooftop, which can be expensive, so.
Mm-huh.
All right.
Thanks.
So the motion on item F.
Move to approve.
Second.
City clerk, if you can color roll, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
Oh, give it a chance, yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
No.
Mayor Owen?
No. No, no, I'm sorry. Uh, item G, Commissioner McGurk?
Thank you. Um, I have to recuse myself from this vote. My wife is employed by Brown &amp; Brown, although I wanna stress that she has no direct or indirect gain from this. I am still gonna recuse myself for any, uh, perception out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. City clerk, if you can color roll, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Nina, I-
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, city clerk.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item 7A, Turnbull Creek Land Acquisition Plan.
This is the DPD Mayor Commissioner, Brian Fields, Director of Development Services.
Have a brief overview of this plan, and turn it over to the Commission for discussion. I'll be referencing page 716 in the agenda packet, which is Commissioner Colodey's proposed work plan for the Commission's review of the Turnbull Creek Land Preservation Acquisition Plan. The plan on page 716 consists of six major tasks with an overall timeframe of approximately seven and a half months to complete. Had a good discussion yesterday with the Turnbull Creek Land Preservation Committee about this plan, and based on their input, we'd like to propose the following that we discussed yesterday. It really starts with three tasks, and these would be performed concurrently. The first is what's listed as Task B in Commissioner Colodey's plan, which is sending out letters of interest to all 98 target parcels that were initially identified by staff. There are 107 parcels total. Nine were already under purchase for the Turnbull Trace property, leaving 98 remaining privately owned parcels. We would send out a blast letter all at once to get some feedback of whether property owners were interested in negotiating acquisition or possibly a conservation easement on their property. Second task is the committee is going to review, again, all the documentation that staff has prepared to date, all the maps and supporting information on environmental zone and so forth. Third task we discussed is we had a consultant scope of work that provides some additional information that we recommended because it was identifying really the economic development potential of land, something that had not been looked at to date, as well as the potential public benefit and some initial valuation numbers. That consultant scope of work would result in a prioritized list and ranking, a preliminary ranking, that staff and the committee can work with going forward. I know it was mentioned that consultant scope could work, could be delayed or deferred until after we get that initial feedback from the letters, or it could be done at the same time. The only concern I would have would be, I think we're going to get a lot of no response from that initial blast of letters, just the nature of mailings to residents and property owners who are out of state, out of the country. I hate to see us overlook a really valuable parcel if there was just no response. So maybe we could just exclude kind of the flat no. But even then, we may want to at least keep those parcels under evaluation to see what, how much value there really is there. Just moving along, the goal would be to complete those tasks in time for our next meeting with the committee on October 14th. At that meeting, we'd really start diving into the parcels, coming up with a list or perhaps breaking them out into tiers, a high-tier preferred list and a middle tier and so forth. The next step would be actually scheduling and performing onsite inspections with, hopefully with at least one member of the committee, to get a look at the land on the ground. And then, kind of, the final tasks are D, E, and F on Commissioner Colodey's list are final ranking, and then bring it back to the Commission for approval, proceeding with appraisals, surveys, negotiations with property owners, followed by city commission, authorization to purchase. That's the point.
Okay. Excellent. Good summary. Commission, discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak.
Go for it.
And it's always awkward to try to speak to you guys and Brian at the same time. My thoughts are, yeah, we can send out a blast, that's great. I absolutely do not want to ignore or deprioritize a no or non-response for a property that staff or the committee has looked at, or one of us say, we need to prioritize that, we need to get out there, put some feet out there, track down the property owner, and see if we can at least initiate communication to get a much better idea whether or not that person is willing to deal or sell that piece of property. I get a little, I'm a little nervous about the amount of staff time that staff puts into the committee. I'm not raising red flags, I'm just saying, when you say maybe go out with a committee person, that's great. All of this is great, but how much time does it take for you to find the time with staff and then find the person who's going to go out? I get a little worried that the committee is getting, you know, this started with one focus, and this is a problem in government a lot. Starts with an intent, and then seems to escalate and escalate and escalate. This committee was originally formed for simply overlooking our shoulders, overlooking our shoulders, to see what's going on and have access to staff to answer any questions they had for obvious transparency. That role has far exceeded that, and I know we talked about it, and I agree that we can engage them a little more. I just want to kind of remind everybody, let's not get ourselves overextended with staff time on the committee, lose sight of the goal, which is go after quick and hard at these properties. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Colodey, you're next.
Although I did come up with the work plan, it's not my plan, it's the committee's plan. They approved it, they endorsed it, they liked it. It is not something written in stone. If we find some properties along the way that pop up after that first letter, we're not going to ignore them. You know, it's been 10 months since the, since the public said, our residents said, go for it. The first acquisition, which we're going to complete in September, was more of a shotgun wedding than anything else. All the publications showed that particular property, and even though I had slight reservations about the cost, it was approved. But they also approved $15 million, knowing it was $9 million for that property. So, we have to move ahead, we have to be a little more expedient, we certainly will not overlook anything. Guaranteed, we will not overlook anything. We've been contacted already by someone who wanted to have their property looked at to see if we could come up with an agreement. A couple other related things is I spoke with our attorney as to what properties we could actually acquire, and she's going to clarify that for us, what their attachment to the creek has to be. Obviously, it has to be in the watershed where it'll provide value, but we'll get a definitive answer on that. The next thing is, it was a very big issue last year. I would like us to develop a, a, a public presence, whether just on our website or through some notifications, that the public knows what we're doing and where we're looking. I just, I want the project to move ahead, is what I want. And I want it in orderly method, and I appreciated the committee's endorsement of that plan. And I would like this commission also to endorse that as an approach we should follow. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
What's that?
Before even discussion of task forces and what we are actually going to purchase, I had requested that we look at conservation easements. After further discussions, I realized that conservation easements are difficult and unwieldy. I'm leaning back towards purchasing of lands, unless I can find very good advice from staff that said conservation easements would be fruitful, more beneficial to the city. So, are we still, because I heard the task force the other day mention conservation easements, and then the discussion went further to say, well, wouldn't it be kind of strange, and again, the word unwieldy, to have a purchased land, a conservation easement, two purchased lands, another conservation easement? How would that actually work for us? Should we steer away from conservation easements, my first question? The second question is, I keep hearing that there are no other sources of funds, yet I hear anecdotally, and I will pursue it, that there are organizations like the Nature Conservancy, the Natural Resources Defense Council, which may help us with the purchase of lands like these. I would ask staff to please take a look at some of those agencies, give them a phone call, ask them if they could contribute. They might be very eager to do so. Plus, the St. John's Water Management District. I had an anecdotal conversation with one of their staff and said, oh, we would be interested in looking at the Turnbull for contributing, or at least helping in some way in the, in the function and maintenance of that property. So could you also look at that? Because it seemed like we're just relying on the taxpayer, and if we could look at all sources to help us, at the county, another one, look at the county to see if they would be willing to help us purchase this more land. So there's a lot of money out there, maybe we could try to grab it?
We will. Just to your previous point, we, going in, we are expecting conservation easements to perhaps be a component of this acquisition for the primary reason of just valuable property, abutting the creek where the property owner just does not want to sell the land. And the next alternative to doing nothing would be to setting aside a conservation easement for, you know, a certain distance from the, from the creek, which is common on development adjacent to waterways like Turnbull Creek. So we'd like to have that option, we'll kind of see as we get into it how realistic that is in this case.
I'd appreciate that, Brian, thank you.
Clarification, Mayor. We can, under the way the bond was read, create easements, or we have to purchase? I'm unclear on.
It says acquire lands, so that's an interesting perspective I hadn't thought about before. I mean, I would think arguably a conservation easement in perpetuity does something, but I need to do a little more research on that.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, your time.
I like the idea of broadening our search, other than the 98 that we've already identified. Maybe there's some others out there that, that we may want to look at, you know, either further north or further south. So I like that idea that we're not locked into that number, we're going to think it holistically. The other thing is, when we get to the purchase part of this whole thing, how are we going to do that? Are we going to rely on staff to actually negotiate things? Or should we be looking at putting a land use attorney on retainer to do some of this for us? I mean, I would hate, I don't want to put staff into position where they're out negotiating with property owners to purchase a piece of property, and then, you know, it gets blown up, or, you know, it happens to be a friend or a long-term. I'd rather have the third-party outside person, like a land use.
That's why you had Florida Trust to do the negotiation.
Yes.
Where you initially.
Right.
It's because of that reason.
Right. So, but going forward, we're, they're not going to be involved in it because they're smaller parcels of land. So I think that, that we need, need to look at possibly doing a land use attorney for those negotiations and purchases.
Yes, I think that whole final group of tasks.
Yeah.
Appraisals, survey, you know, title work, that's the whole outsourced. We don't have that expertise on staff, including the negotiations.
Right.
Would have to be, we have to bring somebody in for each of those.
And then I also learned that even though that there's not currently money set aside by the state, at some point in the future, if they do, we can apply for a grant after the fact, that would cover some of those costs.
Yeah.
So I don't want to leave any piece of property out because we don't think that there may be funding at some time in the future. So, I think that was, you know, a good, a good idea. I certainly do appreciate Commissioner Colodey's, all the work that he put into this. It looked like a well-thought-out of. I just don't want to, I think we, I don't want to get stuck on days or numbers. If it says we have 30 days to do something, if we can do it in 15, then, you know, let's get the ball rolling. And again, the membership, or the residents, the voting public said $15 million, but we're only going to borrow nine and a half, so that's my two cents. Thank you.
It's a later agenda. Okay, so a couple of thoughts. I agree with everything you said, I think it's a great, a great plan, but I think Commissioner McGurk's point is well-made. I, and I've surfaced this to the city manager, I'm, it's all important, and I'm very concerned. I mean, you know, I want us to all think about just how much time Brian spends, you know, here with us. I mean, he's here the entire meeting, his, he bounces all over this agenda, covers many different items. We're already running short, you know, we have just one person over there, we normally had two, so Kyle would have normally been the person kind of filling in. We're a person down in the city clerk's office. Brian is still trying to assemble the team that he needs, he's got vacancies in his shop, so I am legitimately worried, you know, it's all good and it's easy to set up here, and I do it, so I'm not casting disparaging anyone, but it's easy to sit up here and say, you know, we need to do this, or go seek this grant money or whatever, but at the end of the day, that's somebody behind the desk, and I'm worried that we're starting to run out of the, the right people behind the right desk to do some of that. So I just want to raise that as a, as a, as a concern. I don't have a, an answer, but I did just have one question would be, you know, is there, is there, you know, you look at that commission that we, that we formed, our advisory committee, and there's some real talent on that, a lot of them are volunteer. You know, would there, could they, is there a role that could be played by a part-time person to do some of this stuff to take it off of Brian? That they could take ownership of it, or is there other staff that could do it? So we don't have to answer that, you don't have to respond today, but just please be thinking about, you know, in the order of priorities with all the other stuff we're trying to get, moving along, this is, this is also a priority, but it's just, I don't know, I'm just feeling, feeling the pressure of staff right now, and this isn't because they've said anything. They've not said a single word, but I've, I've been there, and I know what it's like. So I appreciate the good work, let's go execute the plan. I'd love to have it done yesterday, as I know you all would. And if there's any support you need from us, if there's, you can come and say, hey, if we could only do this, or if we had some help doing that, for this commissioner, let me know, and we'll try to use it helping, not just this item, but across the, across the board while we get all the right seat, people in all the right seats on the, on the bus, so. All right. Do we need a motion on this item? Did you have more, more of a comment?
I do have a little comment. I don't even know if we need a motion, or just give them direction.
I think they've got the directions, little.
Yeah, that, that would be fine by me. I, I just want to say that I've been involved in these type of projects for decades, and we've looked very, very thoroughly at all the government offerings there are, but there are people like the Audubon Society, there's the Nature Conservancy, there's historical societies such as with Turnbull Creek and Sugar Mill, where we may be partner with to get some financial assistance as well as guidance. So, I've, I've talked at length with Brian about the staff and what he can and can't do. I think these first couple of things will get the ball rolling, and then he can kind of step back at that point. And as Commissioner Hartman said, we will need an expert when we do those negotiations and we actually buy them. So, I just want to get the ball rolling, and we'll deal with those details.
Yeah. No, you're, the point's well-made. I mean, REI, I mean, they have a giant grant program for stuff like this, I think, I think that's the right company. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of money out there, and so I hope we have the right time and ability to look at that, so. Any clarification you need from us, if you've got any direction you need? Everybody clear? All right. Item B, how are we going to pay for it?
Mayor, Commissioner, John McKinnon. In the audience today, we have Mark Galvin and Angel Laez Singleton with Hilltop Securities to help review all of the proposals that we received, and we also have a presentation, if you would like for them to present it, or I can just go through everything in the essence of time. Which way would you all like for me to go?
If you can just run through it quickly, because I haven't, this is the first time seeing this, so if you can just run through that. If you would mind just going through it quick.
At the July 23 commission meeting, you all had given us the direction to go out for an RFP for, with three goals. An amount not to exceed 9.5 million, a fixed interest rate locked in for 20 full years, and the ability to prepay at any time with no penalty or interest, additional interest. The city advertised this RFP on Monday, July 29th, and last Thursday, August 8th, we received five proposals. We received four proposals with a fixed rate option, and one proposal with a variable 15-year option. Mark and I were both very well pleased to see that we were able to get the full 20-year rate lock from four out of the five semitals. So with that, I will, it is staff's recommendation and Mark's recommendation to look at the Center State Bank fixed rate option for 20 years at 2.45%. So I will let Mark discuss that for a few minutes.
For the record, Mark Galvin, Hilltop Securities, financial advisor to the city. As, as John said, we've got five proposals, and we've summarized them, but basically what we've got is two that we want to just kind of focus in on. One is, you know, four of them were fixed rate, everything that you wanted, 20 years, fixed rate, ability to prepay. There was one, like I said, that was an outlier, that was a lower interest rate, but of course it's only 15 years, and after the end of 15 years, you're subject to risk. And so, we just felt that we needed to just bring that to your attention. Our recommendation is that why take the risk? At the end of the five 15-year period, they've got an index that was based on the Federal Home Loan Bank Board of Des Moines, Iowa, and that's, index has only been out since 2012. So, so we don't have enough information to really get an idea of how high interest rates could go on that particular index. So basically, what we get down here is we just recommend, you got a great loan, you know, 2.45%, everything that you needed. And I think that what, one of the items that we also have in here is that, you know, the interest rate, because of that, you're looking at having a milage rate that's 1.554, and the estimated cost per household is 26.42. And if I remember right, John, as far as what you had on the original term notice was a milage rate of 0.18. So we were able to, you know, with what we received, we had preliminary estimated, you know, to have this come back, where we would have to next fiscal year have a milage rate of 0.18. We were able to come in at 0.1554. So we were able to reduce the impact to the average residential house in New Smyrna by $4.18 over our original estimation. So, you know, we, we feel that with the RFP and such short notice that we were given, we came back and were able to achieve all the goals that were given to us on this RFP. And if, if you decide to go ahead and move forward with this, at the next meeting, you'll have all the documents that we don't have the legal improvement option at that point. With the idea that we'll be closing prior to September the 6th, which is when you need the money for the acquisition of a property.
This, this rate, the 2.45 is locked through, closing date?
That's correct.
They got to do that. They did that for no charge and no charge lock, no cost lock? Okay. Can you go back to whoever, I don't know if you can hold the slide now. You have no one more forward. Actually, I didn't see all these.
And add objects for those.
No, that's all right. Oh, you've got it over there. So the one that kind of summarized the center statement, I think it was maybe six?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Six, yes, sir. If you... Yeah, if you go to page four, which I think is on right here, is that it's two point four five. The, it's prepayable at any time without penalty. So this gives you the opportunity that if you guys decided that you used that money that you've granted to pay yourself back, you can do that. It also has the debt service about six hundred and ten thousand. Total debt service over the life of the issue is a little over twelve million, no corporate tax risk, and also no yield maintenance. So basically you've got the locked-in rate.
Okay. Questions?
No, no questions. Outstanding. This is fantastic. Just under two and a half percent twenty-year fix with no prepayment penalty. I think you did a pretty darn good job in what we wanted, at least certainly in my book. I think this looks, I'm very pleased, especially with the prepayment penalty.
We are going to have actually four banks to go ahead and give, lock it in for twenty years is really unusual. And part of that is because it's a GO issue for New Smyrna Beach. So as much as I would love to take credit for it, you know, the credit is very good.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor? That two point four five is for a house of, I'm sorry, the twenty-six point four two is for a household of what value?
Two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which is the average residential, homesteaded residential property value in New Smyrna Beach.
Thank you. And the rate, is that block lock, locked in?
The two point four?
Yes.
Two point four five is locked in for the entire twenty-year term of the loan.
So we're basically good on that. We're signed in and?
That's correct.
I think is?
I'm planning on making that phone call tomorrow morning.
Because I know they recently lowered the rate, so I was wondering if we could pick from that in any way.
We have a saying in our business, the pigs get fat, hogs get slaughtered. This is an absolutely great rate.
No, it does look good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
What, Commissioner? What was the loan cost? What's the cost going to be to get the loan?
I believe that the, we've estimated that it's approximately, what is it, about fifty-five thousand as an estimate.
Okay.
Just similar to what we've done, we've seen for previous loans for the city of New Smyrna.
Thank you and good job.
Any unique debt covenants they're asking for? Any debt covenants? What are they asking for as far as any debt covenants?
No, it's, it's the general obligation debt secured by unlimited actuarial taxes. So once again, though.
I think you were a cosigner.
The term sheet is very.
The credit just took a hit there. The rate went up.
Yeah, that's the other part that we'll end up doing right now is once again, the devil is in the details. The attorney's part together, but once again, the term sheet is very, very important.
Okay. So are you saying there's basically no debt covenants, like no reserve ratios that they require?
Yeah, the debt service reserve ranking, this is truly is the full faith and credit.
Pays back. Okay. Interesting. All right.
So with this, if, with your approval, then we'll go ahead and work with the attorneys to bring it back for you. The center state for the meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Okay. Is Center State locally owned? Is it a public or what's the, is it right now?
The firm, it's been so much consolidations of some of the banks over there. I, I don't think that it's in Florida. Sorry, it's headquartered out of Florida, but I'm, I could be wrong.
But it did come out of their Daytona Beach office.
Okay.
Okay.
This is great.
Yeah.
Simply put, Center State is not just a local bank. I think they're centered mainly in the Tampa area, but they are pretty much a Florida bank. I don't know why I know that, but I don't bank there. But this is good. It's really, I would be willing to make a motion to authorize them to prepare the documents for our action and accept the proposal of Center State Bank.
So just to clarify on that, a motion to approve RFP seventeen dash nineteen dash FIN. Is that what you're saying, in so many terms?
With the recommendation of Center State?
Second.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. So a motion to approve moving forward with Center State as recommended by staff in this RFP. I have a second. Everyone clear on the motion? That the nine point five million rate is negotiated two point four five percent, twenty-year fixed. So we're all clear?
Yes, please clear up for me. The amount we're borrowing is nine point five, not eight point nine?
The amount we're borrowing is nine point five million? Are we, now, are we going to pay closing costs out of proceeds? Are we going to borrow nine point five five?
No, that includes cost.
Yeah, so we're going to pay closing, so we're borrowing nine, nine point five million would be the amount of the bond. We're going to pay closing costs out of that, so we'll have nine point four five to go spend.
And the state reimburs you fifty thousand dollars for the closing as well? Out of the loan, when you get the loan?
The state reimburses?
Uh-huh, there's fifty thousand dollars there on the.
Okay.
It gets better.
There you go. Does she add anything to that? Okay, does that answer your question?
Just on that, was that for the entire loan or for the entire cost?
It's, it's, my understanding, it's for the, for the cost, whatever you do on the closing on this one. Because the amount you're getting, it's for this property, the three point, three point six, I guess it was, for the nine five. But they got it for eight point nine four, so it's up to fifty thousand dollars. That's my understanding.
And that's our fee, attorney's fees as well.
Yeah.
Whatever closing, whatever cost it associated with purchasing the property.
Right, so it's not just strictly for the loan, it's for everything that we've incurred up to here.
If it's only fifty grand, the closing cost of the loan are fifty-five, then it's just the closing cost. All right, we have a motion and a second. I think we got our, we're all clear on what that is. Just the abundance of caution, nobody's a major shareholder in Center State Bank, I'm assuming. City Clerk, if you'd color roll, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good work. Thank you both. All right, item eight, a city clerk, city attorney, sorry.
Ordinance number thirty-five nineteen, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, amending chapter eighty-two utilities, article seven, water conservation for landscape irrigation, section eighty-two, two thirty-five.
Can't hear her.
I can't hear in the back.
Oh, really? It's boring stuff anyway, but go ahead.
Oh, it's volume down there?
I don't know, we'll try it.
Ordinance number thirty-five nineteen. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, amending chapter eighty-two utilities, article seven, water conservation for landscape irrigation, section eighty-two, two thirty-five. Additional requirement, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All right, do we have a, do you have a report on that if you'd add?
Um, yes, this was a request by the Utilities Commission. They had requested the city of New Smyrna Beach be included in a list, still can't hear? Yeah, okay. That we update, they wanted to include the city of New Smyrna Beach on the St. Johns River Water Management District as a city that has water conservation measures in place for sprinkler systems. So St. John's take, took a look at our ordinance that was adopted back in the nineties, and there was one provision that needed to be cleaned up to be consistent with state statute, and that's what this ordinance does.
So public hearing, city member of the public wants to speak on this item only. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion by the commission?
Just a brief question.
Sure.
Carrie, this is a technical question about this item. I believe it has to do with the rain gauge monitor that is usually mounted on houses. Do you, as you understand it, are we omitting those now? We won't have to use them?
No, 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 no. So what, what happened was, the language previously said, if you had a automatic lawn sprinkler installed after May first, nineteen ninety-one, they struck that date. So any person who irrigates with an automatic lawn sprinkler system has to have the rain sensor device.
Thank you.
Removing the grandfathering, basically. It's tightening our restrictions.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this item?
That includes us too, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The city?
Because we were sprinkling in the rain the other day.
Uh-oh. It's face, uh, she's over there. Did you hear that? She's trying not to look up. She probably already got a fix. All right. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance thirty-five dash nineteen as read?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
City Clerk, if you'd color roll, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Ordinance thirty-five dash nineteen is adopted. Ordinance forty-four dash nineteen. City Attorney, if you would read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty-four nineteen, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, amending chapter sixty-six, solid waste, section sixty-six, one one one, to update statutory reference. Providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This is another cleanup item. As we were looking at our demolition debris removal services, we picked up on there had been a statutory reference that changed sections. So it's a simple cleanup, deleting the incorrect reference and referring to the chapter generally.
So public hearing, any member of the public wants to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion by the commission? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt ordinance forty-four dash nineteen as read?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do you have further discussion or, okay. City Clerk, if you'd color roll, please.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Ordinance forty-four nineteen is adopted. Ordinance forty-five dash nineteen, second reading, regarding the budget, city attorney.
Ordinance number forty-five nineteen, an ordinance amending budget ordinance numbers fifty-two eighteen, fifty-four eighteen, fifty-seven eighteen, one nineteen, eight nineteen, eleven nineteen, and sixteen nineteen. Current expenses and capital outlay required for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Providing for the reversion of unencumbered funds, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Thought you were going to have to leave us. I just remembered another question I had for you. Go ahead. Do you have a report on this?
Uh, yes, Mayor Commission. From the first reading to the second reading, if you look to the back up, anything that is shaded in green is additional items that have been provided to me by the staff and discussed with the city manager for inclusion in this budget amendment. So I wanted to go through some of the items briefly. In preparing the nineteen twenty budget amendment, I found that we are due some additional state revenue sharing. And so that's captured in this budget amendment in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. So the other items that we went through within the general fund is we had to take care of some contractual obligations with the city manager and the city clerk. The addition of a person, one person in the finance department of fiscal business analyst one. Within finance and IT, reclassification of expenditures from open positions as the new IT director was needing additional software for virus protection, et cetera. We also needed to take into account and transfer monies to the capital projects fund for the city hall annex. With all of that, we were able to bring, our revenues will exceed our expenditures. So we were able to bring in additional reserves at nine thirty nineteen of two hundred thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. As we move over to stormwater, since I've been here, we've been speaking with the Utilities Commission. We have some contractual obligations with the UC on the Islesborough project that we are putting on the tax roll for the nineteen twenty year, the assessment for Islesborough. But we actually owe them in the current fiscal year sixty-two thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. So that takes account in this budget amendment. Right now, we, on the, at the airport, we have the taxiway project. So that, that price had come in higher than expected. So your airport manager went back to the FAA and we were able to get an additional fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars in grant revenues to help offset that cost. In our police impact fee fund, we have that joint training facility with the city of Port Orange. And there are some expenditures related to that that are also due this year. So we had to account for appropriations of eight hundred thousand dollars. So the money's there. We just had to appropriate it for an expenditure. In transportation impact fee funds, we're having to, two studies. The fund out of it for the East West Connector and the transportation impact fee study. In building and inspections, our, we're going to have to utilize some of our prior year appropriations due to the amount of permits and everything going through the building and inspection department. It is the request of the building official to hire an additional inspector and an additional admin within that fund. Then this evening, with the include, the issuance of the nine point five million in debt proceeds, we need to budget for that. So this budget amendment also accounts for the nine point five million debt issuance and the transfer of the money from the debt service fund over to the capital projects fund for the acquisition of the property. And finally, in our capital projects fund, three oh two, we've set aside all the money from all the funding sources for the city hall annex, the Pettus Park Playground, the Williams Club, the city hall, or he said city hall annex. And all of this is being paid for on a pro-rata basis from the general fund and the building and inspections fund. So if there's any other questions I can ask on it or answer, let me know.
I have one question on packet page seven seventy-two, that list. It had four hundred and twenty-five, seven ninety, half cent sales tax.
Yes, sir.
Want me to do that one again and apologize if you said it and I missed it?
Uh, yes, sir. When I was preparing the budget for nineteen twenty and I was going back to the detail from the state, in the current year, we had budgeted one million, seventy thousand. But we will actually be receiving just under one point five million dollars. So I increased the revenue for what we will be receiving from the state of Florida. So this is shared revenue that is based on population, sales tax collection, et cetera.
Okay. So I think just for clarity, because the half-cent sales tax, most people recognize it as the vote that failed. So this isn't anything to do with that. It's not us paying anything. It's not us receiving anything. This is state sales tax revenue.
That's correct.
It's really not the half cent, because that's all school money. It's the six percent that we get a slice of, right?
Of the six percent?
We get a portion of that.
We're entitled to half, half a percent of it.
I got you. Okay.
So it is coming from the sales tax, just not the half-cent sales tax. So that is the actual name of the state revenue share.
Okay. In parentheses, we should put not half-cent sales tax. Not the half-cent sales. Not the one that made all the news. No, no, it's, we cleared it up now. Not the one you're thinking.
That's correct.
Okay. No questions on that. While I have you up here, though, I did want to go back on the, in the other presentation, I just, it caught my eye on the financial one, it caught my eye that our collection rate this year was at ninety-four percent and it looked like it had never dipped below ninety-six and some change. And I didn't know if that was alarming to anybody else, or if we had a reason for it, or what the?
No, sir. I still expect some delinquent taxes to come in prior to year end.
So you think it's just a timing?
Yes, sir.
We're not comparing year over year perfectly. Okay, got it. Thank you. Any other questions with staff on this item? Okay, this is a public hearing. City member of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion? If not, to have an ordinance to, a motion to adopt ordinance forty-five dash nineteen.
So move.
Second.
City Clerk, if you'd color roll, please.
Commissioner McGurk?
Here.
Commissioner?
I'm sorry. Actually, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not here.
Yeah, I was about to say.
Yes. Yeah, it's getting late for me. It's back to school this week and I got to tell you, getting up early has been rough with the kids.
Were you just trying to do like they do in Congress where they just vote present? Like, I don't, I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, I don't think we could.
All right, let's start over.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. I'm also here. Item D, ordinance 38-19.
And I can go ahead and read 38, 39, and 40, and we can have one staff and staff report in three votes.
Please do so.
Okay. Ordinance number 38-19, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach, .26 plus or minus acres of property located east of South Walker Drive between State Road 44 and Burma Road, addressed as 285 South Walker Drive, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone 4, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 39-19, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of .26 plus or minus acres of land located east of South Walker Drive between State Road 44 and Burma Road, addressed as 285 South Walker Drive, from county urban medium intensity to city medium density residential, providing for amendment of associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 40-19, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning .26 plus or minus acres of property located east of South Walker Drive between State Road 44 and Burma Road, addressed as 285 South Walker Drive, from county R4A urban single-family residential to city R2 single-family residential, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Yep. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Because the rezoning is quasi-judicial. So, we have the annexation, which is legislative, the comp plan, which is legislative, and then the rezoning is quasi-judicial.
Report?
So, just a brief staff report covering all three items. It's a routine annexation of a acre acre property at 285 South Walker Drive, as the readings describe. When a property comes in from the county, we match it up, the county designation for zoning and future land use with the similar city assignments. In this case, this property is being assigned a medium-density residential, future land use, and a zoning in the R2 single-family residential district. At the June 3rd Planning and Zoning Board meeting, the board voted 6-0 to recommend approval. Staff recommends approval of all three items.
Okay. This is a public hearing slash quasi-judicial. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion by the commission.
Mr. Mayor, quick question?
Sure. Just your mic, please.
I will do that. Mr. Field, can we provide city sewer to this property currently?
I don't believe this property is on sewer. It's... Could be provided in the future. If a program was enacted to extend services, nothing is planned immediately that I'm aware of.
Thanks.
I think that's true of this entire area.
Yes. Thank you. All right.
Any other questions? Okay, would you prefer three different motions?
Yes.
All right. Let's start chipping away at these gentlemen. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 38-19?
So moved.
Second.
City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKirk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. So, motion to adopt ordinance number 39-19?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. And finally, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 40-19?
So moved.
Second.
City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
All right. Same drill for items G, H, and I. Carrie, if you would, please.
Ordinance number 41-19, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach, 1.46 plus or minus acres of property located south of Selig Avenue between North Glenco Road and North Timber Lane Drive, addressed as 2440 Selig Avenue, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone 4, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 42-19, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of 1.46 plus or minus acres of land located south of Selig Avenue between North Glenco Road and North Timber Lane Drive, addressed as 2440 Selig Avenue, from county rural to city rural, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 43-19, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning 1.46 plus or minus acres of property located south of Selig Avenue between North Glenco Road and North Timber Lane Drive, addressed as 2440 Selig Avenue, from county RRA rural agriculture to city RE residential estate, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
And still sworn in? Carrie, last time I didn't go through the whole credentials thing, because I don't have it on my script. Do we have to do that? He's not really providing.
Well, for the quasi-judicial, you all can swear him in as an expert and see if anyone objects. I haven't seen anyone get a...
We didn't do that.
I think we're okay.
Okay. All right. Can you rattle off your credentials real quick?
Just Brian Fields, Bachelor's in Civil Engineering, Master's in Business Administration, Director of Development Services, Registered Professional Engineer, 24 years of experience in land development.
All right. Does any member of the commissioner audience wish to question Mr. Fields' credentials? Seeing none, hearing none, except him as an expert witness on matters of land development. Yeah. Mr. Fields?
Again, just a brief staff report, routine annexation of a 1.46 acre parcel, 2440 South Avenue. The city future land use designation would be rural, and the proposed city zoning designation is RE residential estate. At the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, the board voted 6-0 to recommend approval. Staff recommends approval on all three items.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion by the commission. Questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Brian, I noticed on the... When we had the maps, that this particular piece of property did not include the street, but the two adjacent pieces included the street. Is that just a shading issue with the... On the maps? I mean, there's nothing that you see out of the ordinary on that?
The maps included the street, the parcel itself.
When you showed it... When they showed the... On the maps that we had, the two adjoining parcels showed actually covering the street itself, where this one was... Didn't include the street. So, I...
That would be unusual to cover the street. I have to look into that to see if that's correct.
I just... Yeah, I just assumed that it was... Yeah. A shading issue, but yeah. Okay.
Off the top of your head, just for clarity, we always... You know, these rezonings, sometimes it can be perceived that we're doing something or not. So, going from county agriculture to residential estate, there's many factors with density, usable land, et cetera, but on average, rough density equal between the two of those?
RE is our lowest density, I believe. Here, so it's really the kind of the... For residentially zoned property, that's kind of our minimum or that we would have. I don't know what the corresponding county density on that land use, unless Amy knows it off the top of her mind. So...
Okay. Any other questions by the commission?
Question? They're not looking to make this property denser?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 41-19 is read?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to second. City Clerk, if you would, please.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 42-19 as read?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Working together. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner McKirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. That passes. Ordinance... Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 43-19 is read?
So moved.
Second.
City Clerk, if you would, please.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKirk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Ordinance 43-19 is adopted. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Brian. All right. Item 9, A, B, and C. Remember, these are first readings as we do. We don't vote on these. If you have comments afterwards, direction for staff, feel free to chime in. We're going to move quickly. Item A, Carrie, if you would, please.
Ordinance number 46-19, an ordinance amending the city of New Smyrna Beach land development regulations, amending Article 5, Section 50402B3 Highway Service Business District to provide an exemption from landscape buffer requirements for certain properties within the US-1 corridor, amending Article 6, Section 60409 off-street parking, loading, and driveways to provide an exemption from parking requirements for certain properties within the US-1 corridor special parking district, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Okay. I have a couple of comments, but let me just say this before I forget. The second reading of public hearing will be held at the regular city commission meeting scheduled for August 27, 2019. Any other comments before I jump in and listen?
Mr. Mayor? I just want to share with my colleagues, I don't know if it'll make any difference, but we're omitting landscaping buffers and telling people that they don't have to put in as much parking. That's what it appears to me. Am I right?
Yeah, that is correct. I mean, that was... This was the subject of the whole workshop we had on May 25th or 8th or something like that. Where we talked about, you know, vacant is the worst state a business can be in. We were trying to relax the requirements for those that have been vacant for more than six months. We were going to allow them to basically come in under the old requirements rather than having to measure up to the new ones, because it was kind of stymieing business. So, when you phrase it like you just phrased it, it sounds bad. When you phrase it in the context of the hour-long meeting we had, et cetera. Now, I'm not... I have some concerns. I'm not trying to roll over that, but we're... No, we're not doing with parking requirements. We're just saying you don't have to measure up to what they are that's stopping anything from happening.
Got you. Thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Clody?
I will express my real concerns at the second meeting. I just don't like all the things included in it.
And so, I guess my thought, my approach on that was going to be giving some feedback to staff now before we get to the second reading, if we... If we wanted to make tweaks to the language. So, my thought was similar to what somebody raised earlier. I went back and watched the meeting where we talked through this or watched the bulk of it, and we talked about that meeting, you know, understanding concerns, and Commissioner McKirk, you know, was kind of leading his charge and completely support that. But we talked about, is there a middle ground? Is there a way to, you know, have this accomplish what we needed to accomplish, but also still make progress, not roll everything all the way back? I know there was... I think some discussion about that at P&amp;Z, and there were some questions that they had put into the agenda package. I think there was some stuff... Brian and I traded some emails. There was some middle-ground type things that staff talked through. So, I'd love it if, Brian, if you could just maybe walk us through kind of staff's reaction and thought process on how feasible some of that is of... Rather than rolling it all the way back, can we do... You know, one of the things I had brought up at the last meeting was, you know, it's a certain amount of time, and then after two or three years, the standard can start kicking in, because at that point, it's a successful business. Obviously, you can't start taking away parking spaces, but what was... What was some of the thought process or where we landed versus some of those things?
So, the commission directed to give some consideration and not kind of roll everything back. The one item that we incorporated after discussing this internally was that if there's existing landscaped areas on our properties, that we're giving them relief on ripping out asphalt and putting in a new buffer, but those existing landscaped areas that were already unpaved, that they had to bring those up to standards. Complete, you know, ground cover, living plant material and so forth, is that that would at least make the effort to upgrade the property. Some other things that we considered would be to... We could, you know, allow reduced buffer widths instead of eliminating them entirely, but, you know, we're talking about five-foot and three-foot buffers. You kind of reached the point where either you have it or you don't. A three-foot buffer, you really cannot plant a lot in that, so we really kind of went away from that. We could have that buffer exemption apply only to the side and rear property lines with the 44 frontage being kind of the most prominent, but everybody sees this first thing. But that, I think what we hear a lot from folks coming in is that that's what has the most impact on their... On the parking and the paving and things that are already in place on these properties. And lastly, we looked at possibly just having it on a case-by-case basis, as in it's some type of administrative exemption that could be applied based on unique circumstances or a hardship. So, that was our thought process on it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I have a lot of thoughts on this, and let me start by saying I want to give some history to where we were, because I've heard some comments made tonight and previously that misrepresent the reality of the situation. US-1 had a zoning requirements, landscaping, parking requirements for many decades. It was only in the last year or two that we toughened them up. It was only in the last year or two that we toughened them up. Historically, US one has been the problem child of this community. We had, in the past, lessened some of these buffers up. One, for example, we did about eight years ago is when you have commercial property, abutting residential property, you have to have a twenty-five-foot buffer. That created a tremendous problem, because most of the properties on US one are not deep, specifically because they were all platted for homes before US one was not put in, but widened. So there's not a lot of depth to the property. So when you took forty feet off the front, or twenty feet, depending on something, and then you had a twenty-five-foot buffer in the back with absolutely no ability to do anything with it, even put a picnic table or a parking spot on it, it made many parcels like thin little postage stamps you couldn't do anything with. That buffer was to protect the residents, but what the residents have had to deal with, who live up against US one for many years now, are blight, drug dealing, drug addicts, little criminal activities, and they embrace and ask for anything that can be done in a positive light. So going back to just a year or two ago, city staff thought it was a very good idea to put strict parking and landscape restrictions there. I had reservations. I went along with it because I was hopeful. Unfortunately, since the regulations have been put in, in the last year or two, couple of years, we've had a number of properties that are sitting vacant, specifically because those increased regulations have made it very difficult, if not impossible, to financially put in a business. So, for example, I know Ms. Nayland came up earlier, and she said, "The old pizza place north of Blackbeards." Yeah, that's just one of them. The, if you hold that standard that we recently put in place, you're gonna continue to see more blight. It's gonna be a problem. Now, let me go back to just two or three, four years ago. We never had a parking problem, so it's not that we're lessening the parking requirement. We're going back to the parking regulations that were there for many decades, and I dare anybody to tell me that we have a parking problem on US one, that these businesses are spilling out into the roads, maybe one restaurant, and there's ways that they have, and city staff has worked with them. Um, I'm concerned, and I'm concerned that there's a lack of understanding of US one. I had a public meeting, I advertised on the city, that I was gonna do a walkthrough and explain to the public all the problems and do a walk on the street, which I did. Two people showed up. All of a sudden, everybody has a lot of concerns about US one, something I know I have a lot of information about. So I get concerned when people jump in on something emotional that they, that they really don't appear to understand, and that is gonna negatively affect US one even further. We need some parking requi- we need some landscaping requirements. I'm all for that. But the pizza place north of Blackbeards, the one example that Ms. Nayland brought up, you can count about fifty or fifty-five parking spaces. With the current requirement of landscaping and, um, and, and parking and buffers, that gets reduced to about twenty. Now, if you take a restaurant, you only have twenty parking spaces, twenty-five parking spaces, and you have fifteen, twenty employees, where's your parking? Jeff, ten or fifteen employees, how are you gonna have a successful restaurant? Now, the other thing Ms. Nayland brought up, which is a good idea, but it's a problem where you target specific properties. You can't. That's called spot zoning. You can't spot zone. You can't give to one person what you can't, what you're not willing to give to another. So there's a lot of problems with it, and it's, it's very involved. So while we may not all agree on something, I wanna make sure we understand where we're at, how we got there, in the context of it. We're not lessening the landscape and parking requirements. We're simply going, trying to get back to where we were, which wasn't great to begin with. Thank you.
All right. That was the, it's the first reading, um, good.
Concerns about C. I spoke to the city manager already about this.
Hang on. Item C?
Item C.
Hang on, we haven't even got there yet.
Oh, I thought we said we were gonna do them all. Okay.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna go through them as we, as we went through. So, um, I'll just, you know, my thought on that, as it comes back for a second reading, I, I completely agree with everything that, that Commissioner McGurk said. And that last comment, I think, is, is the key, and, and I'll candidly say I don't really have a great answer for it, but we're getting back to where we were, which wasn't great. And I guess what I'm looking for is the solution that gets us back to where we were, so we're not hanging up some entrepreneur that wants to come in, that wants to, you know, open something cool and, and the pizza place. But does provide some incentive, some requirement, whatever, however we do that, so that in, in three or four years, it starts looking more like, if I may, the Dairy Queen than it does some of the other businesses along US one. And that only happens, and this is what I said at the meeting, that only happens when you have, uh, two ways. One is you allow a business to get up and running, then they start generating some cash flow. They can maybe throw out a plant, because at first, they're trying to make payroll. And, or you leave these things in place, and they get combined parcels that are bought up by the big, the big-box stores, the bigger corporate stores that have the cash, the deep pockets, that can meet all of our requirements. We've seen that at, at the Dollar General. So if I have to choose between the two, I, I pick the first one every time. The small, local business that can come in, that we helped get there, and I just don't wanna lose sight of that end goal of overall upping US one over time. And so that's the middle ground that I was seeking in this, is to have some language that required, encouraged, whether it be grants. We had at the, uh, Tony, um, arranged for the, I forget his title and name, but he was a gentleman in Port Orange that was instrumental in helping as they revitalized US one. And he came and spoke at the, the, the small business meeting I have once a month, and the, the focus at that meeting was US one. It was all the US one business owners. And he came and talked, and this is one of the things he talked about, was that they had done the same thing. They had rolled back some of these requirements that allowed the businesses to kinda get going. Um, so I, I think we're heading in the right direction. I just, you'll hear me talk more about that at the second reading, so if you bring other ideas forward at that time, I'd be interested.
And, and Mayor, I wanna stress one thing. Please reach out to me. I would love to walk with any of you, anybody out there listening. I'll take you for a walk. It's only one or two blocks, and I can show you what all the problems are and what we're facing, and it'll make a lot of sense to people.
I would love to take you up on that, but my attorney's over there.
No, no, when I say, right, well, I, I, I'm projecting this to the audience and the people at home listening. Definitely can't do it with the commission.
All right, uh, so that's first reading. You've heard the thoughts. You've heard a couple of the concerns raised, so just keep that in mind as it comes back for a second reading. Item B, please.
Ordinance number forty-nine nineteen, an ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Weaver Construction, Inc. to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of waste within the city of New Smyrna Beach. Outlining franchisees' duties, providing terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
All right, second reading, a public hearing will be held at the regular commission meeting scheduled for August twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. Comments on that one? Hearing none. Ordinance fifty-one dash nineteen, city attorney, please.
Ordinance number fifty-one nineteen, an ordinance amending the city of New Smyrna Beach code of ordinances, amending chapter fifty-four offenses to create section fifty-four dash four and sexual offender residency restrictions, exceptions, and penalties. Providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Vice Mayor.
Okay. Again, I talked to the city manager earlier about this, and, and Chief, maybe you can help us out on this. Um, I'd like to see a map of where these areas are gonna be. If we include all the daycares, the churches, and everything else within a twenty-five-hundred-foot thing, are we unintentionally gonna force people into one section of town or not? I mean, are we gonna push them all up to north US one? Are we gonna push them all out to West Canal? So I'd like to see a ma- map at the second reading or before then, exactly the areas that we're excluding. And then the other qu- thing was, um, the gentleman raised a good question. What do we do about the people who are living out on the boats? I mean, I know you have to register as a sexual offender, um, but you have no way to go out there to check on them, to see if they're actually there, they live there, or whatever. So, um, you know, that may be a thought for later, and we can, you know, expand on that as, as we go. But, I mean, what, what address do you use? On the blue boat, you know, at, at mile marker seventy-nine, or?
It's two things. One, we will provide a map for you prior to second reading, um, for, for everybody, and make sure that those, those areas are outlined there. Um, but I don't think it particularly forces anybody into one particular area.
Okay.
Uh, but we'll definitely provide that for you. And then the, the, the boat issue is, is just that, um, they do have to register, but unless we're going out there and, and regularly checking on them, or someone is, whether it's FWC or the sheriff's office, uh, then we're not gonna know.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on that, I see?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I also asked for the map, uh, in a previous jurisdiction. An ordinance like this was passed, which actually covered the entire municipality, and they ended up getting sued by being exclusionary. So, uh, the map will provide us a lot of information, and also with Riverside Park, the AOB site, and everything else up and down along the river, everything is gonna be, in the water is gonna be within twenty-five-hundred feet of a park. So that'll answer the legality if we can find them to remove them.
There is a, um, essentially a grandfathering clause for people who've established their residency prior to the effective date of this, the adoption of this ordinance. So the interesting thing on the boats, you know, you can lose it, um, so it would, it'd be, you know, I'm assuming they're moving on the waterway, so it'd be an interesting issue to look at.
All right. We are through all the first readings. Item ten A was pulled. Item ten B, housing authority, consider the reappointment of a member to serve a four-year term. Term of current member Chair Rosemary Walker will expire on August thirty-first. She's expressed her willingness to continue to serve on the housing authority for another term. There's been no other applications, no other citizen applications that still hold, okay? That is still true. Um, so do I have a motion to reappoint Ms. Walker, or we could wait for more applications?
So moved.
Second.
City Clerk, call the role, please.
Commissioner Colleti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Just to be clear, this is a reappoint Mrs. Walker, because I, I said it awkwardly, so, all right.
Yes.
Continue carrying.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Walker's been reappointed. She's a member of the housing authority for a term expired August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
And just a point that I've been to several events with the housing authority. The most recent was the ribbon cutting. And I, I think she's been at every event that I have. I'm sure she's at more than I go to. So I thank you for your service, and I, I thank you for your, your commitment to the community and all that you do. So thank you, and welcome to another four years.
Well said, Vice Mayor. All right, item C was pulled, so that leads to mayor and commission reports. Don't pack up yet. We do have some, uh, items to attend to in the city attorney's report. Uh, but the, uh, mayor and commission reports, we're gonna change it up. We'll, we'll let the Vice Mayor think for a minute. We'll start to my right and move this way. Start with Commissioner Colleti.
Okay. Uh, the state has preempted us on, uh, removal of trees in the residential area where there's a house. I real- and, and said we can't charge a fee, we can't make them do a replacement tree. I actually have no problem with that. I do have a problem with the fact that it requires the homeowner to get an arborist to certify, or certified arborist, to, uh, state that the tree should come down because of the hazard it is. The fact that we don't know that is going to lead to problems into checking into whether a person just took the tree down and said they didn't know anything. I would like this, uh, commission to authorize the, uh, uh, acting manager, uh, to write to the, whomever he has to write to, to ask that the person amend, that an amendment being prepared saying they must notify our, our city that a, uh, arborist has deemed the tree dangerous, and that they can take it down. That way, we won't get calls from everybody else in the neighborhood, or we won't go out there saying you didn't take a permit out. And I just think it would be, uh, something that would amend that ordinance and would be a good thing.
Let me just make sure I understand that. We're gonna want to ask our staff to reach out to the state and amend what they did to make it a requirement that the arborist or, and/or homeowner submits that to us?
Yes, at no fee.
Yeah.
Just that we have it on file. So we know what's going on, that we can tell the neighbors when that big, beautiful tree that goes over four or five yards, uh, really was...
Yeah, it's a, I mean, a point we'll make, because I'm sure we're getting...
And that should go to the person who, uh, whichever senator valued property rights so great that he put this thing through without thinking it out.
You or she?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure if the staff could, talk about the state staff, that they could actually make these changes, because I'm sure this is coming from higher up.
It's the state legislator.
Yeah, no. It's a legislator. I know the state can't change it, but they pass the law, they can amend the law, so.
Next time they're in session.
Next time they're in session.
Yeah.
Uh, second thing. Uh, I received my third call from a person who received a, a parking violation at either a park, a boat ramp, or one of our parks along the river, that they got a ticket because their license plate wasn't registered. The reason their license plate was not registered, because they went to the DMV. They said, "Your license plate's too old. We're giving you a new one." And they don't bother to tell the people that you gotta go to New Smyrna, or you're gonna get a ticket when you park in one of our facilities. Uh, I would like, um, some type of procedure worked out, uh, that can get that information out, whether it be an insert into a coming tax bill. Uh, I believe we've already had it on our website. Uh, if we can hand five hundred flyers to the DMV office and say, "Pass one out in New Smyrna." But I, I got a call from a senior citizen who, who doesn't want to pay the thirty-five-dollar fine that we raised. He was given all the help that our police department could, and he now has to go to Deland to explain the situation, to appeal his ticket. And I just think that if, at least if he had a way to do it in town, that that would help out. And I'd leave it to the chief, I know I've spoken with him about it, to figure that out. Item number three. The parking study that we're updating along Flagler Avenue has been released in draft form and, and has some information for us. I know we're waiting to do a second count during a busy time, uh, which may be coming this year or may not, because our summer season is kinda going away. Uh, but, uh, one thing it has shown is that in the mornings, up till ten or eleven o'clock, virtually all the parking spaces are vacant along Flagler Avenue. I would like a recommendation from staff, perhaps from the chief, to designate some of those parking spaces as loading zones. So that loading, uh, vehicle, vehicles don't have to plug up Pine Street, Cooper Street, and every one of the surrounding streets with the delivery vehicles when they're carting their stuff two blocks up the street and just being a hazard to pedestrians. They park on the sidewalks. They park anywhere. Uh, the chief has explained to me that we have nothing on our books to prevent this. I would like to make some order out there, and I would like recommendations on how to do that. I'd like to see a loading zone, morning loading zones established on Flagler.
All right. Do we wanna go over, he, Colleti asked for a number of things. I think we need to give staff, give a direction on this, right?
Yeah, I was gonna...
Yes.
Yeah.
Wait until you got through with all of them, then we'll, we'll chip in. Is that it? You finished?
Yes.
Okay.
I could go on, but...
All right, let's go, uh, let's go reverse, let's go reverse order, and, uh, and, yeah, I think you, you had a couple of things you asked for, so I think we owe it to staff. Probably don't have time for a, you know, giant dialogue on every item, so maybe it would be, you know, come back and bring this up in a future agenda, or maybe it's, we can just check it off, so. Um, we'll, we'll start maybe down here. Just quick, quick thoughts on, uh, the Flagler parking loading zone. Any thoughts on pointing staff in direction on that, Vice Mayor?
Uh, I certainly would support the loading zone, uh, but not just on Flagler, um, all of Beachside. I think it's all a problem. Um, but it's also, we need to include in that conversation a route that they're gonna travel. Um, because they can park on Flagler and then go down Florida or go down Jasmine and still cause issues with those large trucks. So we should, a part of that, looking at that in, in its entirety, would also include a, a route or something that those larger trucks would have to travel or should travel to keep them off the, the smaller residential streets. So I would support you on that.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, when this, with this delivery thing, I, I think there's a way that, this is a, a symptom of a, of a problem. And the problem is, is that the delivery trucks come willy-nilly all day long. First of all, I think that many of these businesses can get key drops. That don't, key drops. So anyway, I think we can direct staff on this issue to maybe bring it back, and we can have some discussion on it. Because I think that there's some things, a number of things that we can do to help solve this problem.
Uh, before any more comments, I just wanted to say that what we did along, uh, was to reauthorize the, uh, looking back on the, the parking study that was done a number of years ago, and that did not address loading zones, which is why I think we specifically direct the staff to include that as part of the, uh, the issue.
Okay. So I, I, I'll just go down the line. I, I concur with Commissioner McGurk and Hartman, actually. I think, I think it is an issue. I've dialogued with the residents. I've dialogued with the businesses. I've sent emails this week to business owners on Flagler, uh, to the, to the head of FABA. They know it's an issue. Uh, I mean, some of them, you know, they, they, they're on Flagler more than any of us, you know, so that they get it, uh, as residents of Flagler. Uh, I do think it merits, uh, I don't wanna just give staff a direction right here. I want, I'd like to say, have those groups in a room and, and residents in a room and come back and say, you know, "Hey, here's, here's the issue, and here's a couple of ways we think that can actually solve it," using this data. And that's an interesting data point, that, hey, up until a certain time, we'd have loading zones that were maybe, you know, up till eleven AM or ten AM or whatever it is. Um, but any caring from the other side of the coin as well, making sure, um, that, you know, that, that we can work that out with everyone. So I, I would support having that, come back with staff, spending a little time to, to draft a couple of different options on that. Um, so I think we do need to put it to bed some way or the other, at least check it off and say, "We've made some progress." It may not have solved it completely, but at least have made some progress, so. Um, Commissioner Sax, we'll let you chime in. I think we've already got enough. Staff's gonna bring it back. We've already got that support, but anything that...
Yes, thank you. I, I would be, uh, superfluous in support of the, uh, traffic and trucks.
I thought so.
It's, it's affecting our zone...
It's affecting ours own too.
Remind us what your next item was? Forget the, the one, second to last?
Well, I started with the tree, then I went on to the tag regulations.
Oh, the tag regulations, right.
If, if there's a way to, to, uh, make it easier for our residents who get tickets to resolve it locally.
Okay.
I leave that to the chief. He knows the way.
Do we need to chime in on that? I'm okay, I mean, I, I've seen some of the same things, somebody, if staff has any ideas on that, or even that we have to get involved, I mean, if you don't have any ideas, and you wanna brainstorm that, bring something back to us?
Well, why don't we just, when people sign their tag up, why don't we just have a disclaimer that says, "When you change, when you get a new tag or change your tag," you know, and probably what the elderly is, you know, we all get, we're all gonna get confused at some age, and there's, even though it's very heartbreaking and you sympathize, I'm not sure there's a whole lot we could do about it, other than simply put a disclaimer on something when you register your tag, "Please remember to notify the city when you get a new tag."
Okay. I am the elderly.
Yeah.
To start with.
He voted here earlier, so it's before the time of confusion.
And you also only are forced to change your tag, I think, once every six or 10 years, or something like that.
So just from my...
Nobody's gonna remember.
Just from my understanding, Chief, is that, I mean, is that one of those things that once the ticket is issued, even if we, we can't hear that as an appeal here, we, that has to kinda go up the chain, we can, somebody call us and explain that, and be like, "Oh, no, we can verify that and deal with that in-house." I mean, if it's only two or three cases, and it seems like, seems like you could validate that, like, if you had a valid pass, you get a new tag, we'll give you a 30-day window. I don't, I don't know, I mean, I don't wanna put you on the spot right here, just see if you can come up with any ideas.
City Manager, and I can talk about it, there's a couple of options, but none of them are going to be painted.
Okay. All right. Well, they started at the DMV, so they're already used to paint, so. All right, and the last one was reaching out to the states. Comments on, comments on that, Commissioner? Vice Mayor, we'll start with you again. It's on the tree ordinance.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to drafting a letter for the entire commission, but I think we could also reach out individually to our elected representatives, um, as concerned citizens, and also as elected officials. I think that would carry a little bit more weight. Um, I don't give it much hope. Um, you know, and, and I drove by one today, which was a large oak tree coming down, and I wondered, "Well, did they have a permit, or is this one of those that maybe..." And it's not only an arborist, it's also a landscape architect who has no training whatsoever in tree diseases and such. So, um, I, you know, I would, hopefully, at the league of city level, maybe we could have some conversation and, and, because it's gonna affect a lot of us, not just us.
Right.
So that may, that may be a better approach, is from a league standpoint. So, uh, we could talk to our league representative here in Volusia County, and maybe, uh, they can bring that up at a league level.
Yeah, just...
My thoughts on that, so...
Yeah, so, you know, my attitude is, sure, you know, we could waste, whether it's staff or you or me, we can waste our time. I think we know the reason why this thing was created. It was to circumvent the city's policy, so I don't think they really care about a letter. If you want staff to write one, that's fine, but however, I can bring, I think we can do better, and I think we're gonna hit the nail on the head. I can bring it up at the new executive meeting at the League of Cities and see maybe whether or not, let's do this for the Volusia League and see if I can get that support to send, and then we can have the league also contact our local, uh, representatives, representatives from the state. And I'll do that, I'll, I'll spearhead that to see if we can get that, and that'll be a lot better than you or I or, or our staff saying, "New Smyrna Beach," you know.
I'd support that 100%. And so I'd say, staff spend no time on it, will go to the league level, I think that carries more weight anyway, so, good, good thoughts. Uh, did I clear all your items, Commissioner Colode, and are you finished?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Sacks, next up.
Thank you. Uh, to continue the, uh, trucking problem, delivery trucks, they're not only causing problems with traffic and blocking sidewalks and causing problems for residents, but they're breaking up our streets and sidewalks. We're incurring, sorry, we're incurring damage from the delivery trucks. Everything from a flatbed concrete truck to a, uh, to a food delivery truck, it's getting to be a big problem in the city. But I have a lot more pressing problems. So, I want to bring, uh, notice to you all that there's a seawall underneath the South Causeway Bridge, and that seawall, if you haven't noticed, is crumbling to the point of extreme danger. The, uh, the dirt behind it is subsiding, causing it to cave in, and we have cones and tape there. We've had cones and tape there for probably several years, if I'm correct, Mr. Manager. And he, I mentioned, I mentioned it to him, and he said, "Well, we're in litigation with FDOT, because they claim it's our property, because we put a fishing pier there, we're parking or such, and it's in litigation." And I would like, it, it's a real danger, because it's one of our major parks, and yet we're considering fixing the wall at Old Ford Park, which is no easy task. But while we do that, you should go look at the seawall by the fishing pier, and you will be aghast to see that. So I just wanna bring that to your attention, uh, maybe, hopefully, I can make a motion, or staff can, uh, can undertake a conversation with, uh, FDOT and see if we can agree who needs to fix that. It's not cheap either. Um, I understand on the 19th, um, our, our mayor will be an emissary, along with the city manager, to talk about 16th Avenue with our councilwoman, Deb Denny's. I gotta let you guys know, I strongly oppose putting a parking lot on their property, unfortunately, on the end of Hill Street. I think it goes directly against their mission statement. In fact, on their last agenda, I noticed two items which totally contradicted each other. One mentioned the conservation and the serious consideration of setbacks, global sea rise, and the next thing you know, they wanna pave a beautiful sand dune and put in a walkover. The walkover part is fine, but to put an asphalt parking lot for 10 spots to the tune of $600,000 at the end of what is a sand street in a beautiful residential neighborhood, all it says to me is, "You don't give a hoot about our neighborhood." And all deference to the county council, I think it's wrong-minded to put that parking lot there. I hope that my mayor and my manager go and express those opinions of mine to them, because I just think it's wrong. I think a walkover would be the most appropriate thing to do. And, and on top of that, I understand they wanna create more parking on the beachside. The South Beach is a wonderful residential neighborhood. We will incur more crime, more traffic, more, more pollution, more garbage. It's, it's gonna be the same problem that you have in North and Central Beach, only at 55 miles an hour. I think it's a very wrong-minded thing to do. I don't think they care about the neighborhood. I think they need to go look at that neighborhood and see what harm they're going to do. They won't be able to retain the stormwater from 10 spots, and that cost right now is $600,000. So I urge all of you, at any time, please talk to, uh, Councilwoman Deb Denny's. She asserts that she was not for the parking lot, but Chair Kelly said he is for a parking lot. It does not make sense anywhere in the residential neighborhood. Uh, it's a total detriment to a, to a wonderful historic area. My next point is this. Gentlemen, I hate to belabor it, and I may not much longer, but I have to tell you, you know I've urged this commission to place a deaf child sign at a residence on Magnolia. We've come to find out that there are already deaf child signs in the city. One was placed in 1990. By unanimous decision, the roll was called, and a deaf child sign was placed. I understand from our city manager that around 2010, we're not sure of the facts, we don't have the paperwork, that it's possible that another deaf child sign was placed. I don't think there's a plethora of deaf child signs. If signs are going to make people numb, I would take out all the stop signs, and no one would advise that. We're talking about one sign. It, I, I would like to show that I, I'm considerate for people's needs, and I, I'm sure you are to, you would like to also. And again, we're just talking about one sign. Could I get at least a second for discussion about a deaf child sign? Again, the county engineer said it would do no harm to place a sign on this street. Could I get a second for discussion? All right, gentlemen, let the record show that I did not get a second for discussion on a very serious safety item that, um, I consider extremely dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll hold my comments, Commissioner McGurk.
My time's up?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wouldn't, okay.
No, your time's starting. You've got three minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, first thing I wanna say is, I absolutely support a police vote, and, um, that sounds like it'll be a lot of fun, and clearly what the person was saying about, you know, what the laws are, we, New Smyrna residents will get a little pass, right? Jeez. Um, you make a lot of money with this thing on speeding in no wake zones, I can tell you that. Anyway, um, what, what you guys have before you, I appreciate, Kelly, making some copies. Lake Fairgreen Circle residents created a petition to, um, show the support that, that they really need their street resurfaced. I've talked to staff about it. Lake Fairgreen Circle is not even on the six-year plan. Um, something is broken there, because if you go, I encourage you all to go take a drive on the street, walk it a little bit, you'll be amazed, you could actually skate on the gravel with your shoes if you wanted to. But anyway, um, they're, they're very concerned, it's a safety issue, um, and, and clearly, most important, I wanna stress, is aside from needing to get it paved, something is broken with the system of ranking the streets. Um, so, Cola, that's something that I'll wanna bring up with you a little later, maybe we reevaluate this at a later date. Uh, Lake Fairgreen Circle residents may be contacting you, um, I'm not requesting any action at this time on it, um, other than I'll be bringing it up at the next budget meeting. Um, and finally, so, the, the irony I, that I think Commissioner Colode is gonna find in my next request is, uh, is, is not gonna be lost on him. So, I have talked with, there's been a lot of discussion on this commission and this community on plastics, and I have spoken to a number of people. A lot of people have approached me on all different kinds of ideas. I've spoken to a lot of different people. Some people know nothing about what they're talking about, some people know some of what they're talking about, and very few people really seem to be on top of it and understand it. I'm getting peppered with all kinds of requests, and I'm sure you guys are, we've dealt with this issue. So, I had a wonderful conversation with somebody in town who's famous for her efforts, and her name is Linda Henlin, and she started Keep NSB Clean. And I really enjoyed my time speaking with her, because she really has a tremendous amount of knowledge and information, she has taken the time to really understand the issue. Um, and what I would like to do is ask to be able to put on the agenda, the next agenda, the discussion and the parameters of starting a sustainability committee. Now, I was originally gonna come up with the idea of just a plastics committee, but this is a little bit bigger, it's deeper, and Ms. Henlin, um, suggested the, the, the name, and I certainly agreed with her, I thought that that, after speaking with her, that did fit the goal of what we're trying to do. Now, of course, Commissioner Colode, you're gonna say, "Wait a second, you just said we are taking too much staff time." Yes.
Hi, hi.
You don't have to say it, I said it for you. So, here's what, here's what I propose. What I would like to do, and I'm working with Ms. Henlin, is to give staff the parameters to bring back to this commission a discussion item of what my idea would be. And I can tell you that the main concept behind it is this, creating a committee that doesn't rely on staff, but that relies on itself to vet the requests and all of the information or the, or, or, or the, the issues that we're getting, we can send this to the sustainability committee to actually research it and then make recommendations to the commission on what they think about it. Let me stress, this is not staff doing all the work, it's simply staff observing, and then the committee, so the appointments of this committee would be very important, because we would wanna put people on who would take the time to do the research. It's not staff bringing it all to them, it's them doing it. Um, it's an idea, it's a suggestion, and all I'm asking for at this time is to allow a discussion item on it for the next meeting.
I'd like to appoint Linda Henlin? No, it's, I'm sorry, do we get ahead of ourselves?
No, uh, as I was addressed, I think it's a great idea, I really do. And, and I think that she could bring forth a lot of the information, uh, to look at, 'cause I think most of us up here probably know more than we let on about the sustain, sustainability of a lot of things. And there are a lot of pros and cons. We, we rushed ahead, we did something which was very good to do, uh, but we, we gotta keep the ball rolling on it.
Well, yeah, the point of that, I'm sorry, Mayor, the point of this is, is we're getting peppered with all kinds of requests, and I'm talking to people who don't understand what a plastic is, the difference between, they think they know the difference between a plant-based plastic is and a petroleum-based plastic, or what a compostable is, and what you do. If it's compostable, you put it in the trash. No, you don't. So there's a lot of confusion. My point is that we create a committee that, when people have requests, they can go before this committee, ask for this committee, talk with the committee, and this committee then gives us requests, as opposed to someone saying, "Hey, I want the city to, um, get a recycle bin for compostables, but we don't have anywhere to put it. Do, is there a place in Volusia County?" There's a lot to talk about, and that's what this committee would do, would vet these ideas. Anyway, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, no, it was your time. Anybody not support that concept of having staff at least come back, and again, no, no real staff time on that, but anybody not support that idea, and then bring that back for discussion for us?
I do support it, I have a question, though. Is the assertion that we expand the plastics ordinance to be beyond the municipal government?
I'm not sure I understood that question.
Well, we now have a plastics reduction for the city government. Are we planning on extending that to the public?
This has nothing to do with that. This is simply the formation of a committee that we can help use to vet the information and help us make recommendations in the future.
Towards?
Just plastics, compostables, recycling, sustainability issues.
So if we were to consider something like that, this would be the committee that would help guide that, I think is the, is the point. But I don't know...
I'm willing to look at that, but you would require buy-in, though, so that should be part of the discussion.
What do you mean, buy-in? I'm not...
People to subscribe to what you plan on discussing.
It would be our decision, the committee would simply make recommendations. If we have an issue, we can send it down to the committee. Be, yes. And ultimately, what my idea is, each one of us would make an appointment.
Just to let you know that there are cities that are moving towards that. It's a major move to demand that the public do the same things that government does.
Yeah.
I don't know how we can get there, but if that's your goal, I, I fully support it.
Well, the, yes, the, the, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
I think this is a step towards, I think, having a sustainability committee, I think that's what you call it, right?
Sustainability.
Having that discussion of whether or not we need one, um, is what we're talking about, what they would do and how we make more steps to be more sustainable as a community, as a city government, and as residents, how we encourage it, how we encourage voluntary compliance, how we just do education. I think 80% of it is education. Um, you know, requiring things is, is one way, but as the chief, laws are being broken right now. Just 'cause you make a law doesn't mean people are abiding by them, it just means you have a law. So, education about the importance of that, I don't speed because, well, not a good example. I don't run red lights 'cause I don't wanna die, because I know other people may be coming. It's, it's not the law, it's the education of the dangers of what's happening, so education's important. Sorry, you have a...
That's it, thank you, Mayor. I'm just looking at Chief's face.
Well, anybody that knows me would just laugh at that. Vice Mayor, let's move on.
Um, so, I'll be brief. I, I kinda support Jay's no...
I kind of support Jay's notion about maybe we need to rename our streets. You know, State Road Forty, State Road Forty-four, or US One, whatever you want to call it. If it's Ridgewood to the south and Ridgewood to the north, I mean, why, why are we got to be different? You know, because we have two names for it now, so Old Dixie Highway or US One. So, you know, I would support moving in that direction. It kind of makes sense. The other thing is, again, with your conversations that you're going to have at your little group meeting at the Live Oak Center about the State Road Forty-four businesses, I would like for us to move in a direction to where we start targeting some of those properties that are still in the county. Those businesses that are in the county paying county taxes and see if we can't move them into annexation. I've worked with the planning department, I've got a flyer out for residential properties, I'm a one-man campaign out there trying to convert some of the residential properties, but I think from a business standpoint, especially you're having a meeting later this month, if some of those are, attend the meeting, or that may be something that we can expound upon in another way, is to look at annexations into the commercial businesses that are on State Road Forty-four and/or US One. So.
Agreed.
I mean, it certainly would help with the tax base, it's, there's no exemptions to them, so, and it's not the individuals who's paying, it's the business who's going to pay. Eventually, we may, but you know. I think that would be a movement in that direction. It also gets rid of that hole that you're going to be talking about with the Councilwoman Denny's, about what we do with future annexations, and how we may move with some of those holes that are there that are completely surrounded by the city yet still, there's two or three properties that, you know, are county properties, and how we address those in the future. So, I would encourage you to maybe think about that with those two meetings that you're going to have, and with that off, be quiet.
Got it. Good feedback. Tony, I saw writing furiously back there, we'll make sure to mention that at future meetings. We could even bring up that tool that the county appraiser has on the website, that you can type in, you know, this is the property, and you select the zone, and it compares the taxes, I've done it. And ours is the lowest. I mean, you can't, I tried every other thing for, I picked a random property value, typed in a homestead exemption, and then picked, you know, South Beach County, you know, da-da-da-da-da, and then New Smyrna, it's the lowest, I don't, I don't understand. I bumped into somebody the other day, and they were like, I'm a county resident, you know, I've been meaning to get around, I was like, what, you just like paying taxes? Like, what's, what's the holdup? So, I do think we can get way more aggressive, we've got some good things in work there. So, a couple of things. First of all, I hope everyone had a good break from meetings, although I know we were all busy, many, many other meetings that we were in. Hope staff had a little bit of reprieve from prepping for these sessions and enjoyed a few Tuesday nights with your families. Couple of things that I had, you brought up the meeting with our representative Deb and some other things with council. I just want to say on that, you know, my meeting's going to be more about how we, how we can, you know, best make sure she understands some of the, you know, our positions on things as they're coming for council, so that she can best represent us. I think it's, I think it's very critical, the posture that we take with the county council, and I want that to be one of working together. We're not going to agree on every decision, I can assure you, there's probably decisions we make that they disagree with as well. But the posture that we take with them, especially publicly, I think is very important. We're obviously going to fight for what we feel is right for New Smyrna Beach, and I think we have to respect that they, as elected officials, are fighting for what they feel is right for Volusia County. Time some of those come to an impasse, that's what I want to talk with Deb about, is how can we best privately, publicly work together on those, try to clear those misunderstandings? Not going to agree on every item, and, you know, this is the delicate time when they, when they cross over like this, but, you know, have immense respect for what they do as elected officials. If anyone can relate to the difficulty of that job and the inability to please everyone, you know, we should be able to relate to that. So, that's kind of the tone and tenor of that meeting. We're not, you know, I'm not going in necessarily with, on Sixteenth Avenue specifically, it's more kind of the concept of how we address that in the future. I may relay my own personal feelings on that, as I've encouraged each of you to do with that, and there are some of you have at that, at that meeting. But I guess I'll just leave with, on that topic, you know, again, just remembering that public posture we take with them. You know, if I watch a county council meeting, you know, I don't want them saying, you know, that they, I want them to be very circumspect with the language that they use to talk about my city and my, and my board here. And so, I hope we give them all that same deference. So, I'll leave that. State Road Forty-four, I liked that idea, I don't know how to start that process. I mean, I think we could have some fun with it, if we turn Phil loose with it, as far as like a public, give some ideas, like, I think we could have some fun with it. But I don't know how to start that process from a legal standpoint, or if we can just make something up. I'm like, Greenway's taken, right? That's four seventeen, so we can't.
I'm thinking there's different agencies involved, and I know, like, down in Fort Lauderdale, it is Dixie Freeway, so they have different names everywhere, right? I know we would have control over adopting a naming policy for city facilities, but we can look into what we would do with those state roads and if there's any process in place.
Separate, let's, State Road Forty-four resonates a lot with me, Dixie is going to have more, you know, more opinions and maybe controversy, but, you know, State Road Forty-four, there is no alternate name for that, and he raised a really interesting point I never thought of. He start up north of us, every other city has a name, and ours is just State Road Forty-four.
We'll start with DOT, and I know some of the other issues that comes up with changing the names, his businesses and addresses. And a lot of them, they have, you know, head letters that they got, and their names on stuff, but, but we'll start with DOT, and we'll come back to you.
You can work that out. The mail's still just delivered, the man who knows what's State Road Forty-four is, they don't all lose their minds just because we changed the name, they'll figure it out. So, we can, we can work through those. But I'd say at least understanding the process, so that if we wanted to pursue it, we could. And again, I'd keep the two separate, I'm not saying we can't do both, I'm just, I'd like to keep them separate. Forty-four, I think, could pick up momentum faster than US One, but that's just my opinion. The last thing I would say, and I wanted to kind of put out to the board, is, and I don't have a perfect thing on this, I just wanted to put it out for you all to consider and be thinking about, and that is, I think sometimes when we bring things forward in this time, it's tough for the fellow commissioners to sometimes get up to speed about what's in our head, and, you know, quickly think about all the what-ifs and what-if-nots, and, you know what, man, I really wish I could ask Brian a question real quick on that, and it's, you know, it's nine forty-five at night. So, I've been thinking about how we, how we can improve that process. And so, one thing I thought about is, you know, Commissioner Colleti does this sometimes where he'll have submitted something ahead of time, and it'll, you know, be a little one-page document to say, here, I'm going to bring this up, and here's kind of my summary of it. We actually voted on one of those tonight with Turnbull Creek. So, you know, again, just for commission to think about, and I may try to find some examples of this at other cities, but similar to, you know, kind of submitting a bill. So, you draft something, you say, look, I'm planning on asking for a commission support for XYZ, and that way, I'm not, I'm not sitting here cold trying to remember, you know, the three things that were just rattled off, and making sure I understand them, and, you know, think of all the questions, and then we're voting on them. So, I'm not trying to censor anything by any stretch. I just want to make sure that we, it's clear, I mean, as I've watched this unfold, I hear a lot of times, you know, something will be brought up, and that's, well, I need more clarity on that, or I don't understand this, or what about that? And then we often land on, will staff go, you know, go bring us back more information? Anyway, so again, I don't have an answer, I think it's something that we should keep an eye on, about how we, how we can maybe get that to our fellow members in the sunshine part of the agenda package ahead of time, or, you know, if you see something in some other city, or you talk to somebody at the League of City events, and have some great idea on that, I'd be, be happy to, be happy to hear it. So, I think that was, I think that was it for me. City manager's report.
The most important thing is the budget workshop on the twentieth. Staff is looking forward to that workshop. I think it's going to be informative to the staff and to the commission. You will see departments coming in, they're given a specific time slot, they'll be discussing their budget, revenue, expenses, goals, accomplishment, needs, how to improve, if they are a revenue department, how they improve the revenue for their department or their facility. We're looking forward to that one. And again, the whole idea is to bring a balanced, healthy budget, but in the meantime, not to burden the taxpayers. So, we're going to try to do our best to make it the best workshop for the budget. That's probably the highlight of my, and the mayor went over the meeting with the county council, we had a meeting with the utilities commission on Friday. I thought that was a good productive meeting, Mayor. And we'll probably get back a report with you soon, as soon as we come up with some items on it. So, any questions on the report?
Questions of the city manager? Better ask her quick, because his voice is fading. City clerk's report?
No report.
Did everyone have a chance to meet with Kelly and see the presentation she did?
Yes.
Make sure, if anybody missed that, make sure to get a copy of it, she did an outstanding job, I really appreciate it. And fourteen, city attorney's report?
Yeah, so your June twenty-fifth meeting, you directed me to prepare a contract providing for the conditions of the clerk's interim employment. I put something together, I couldn't anticipate all of the issues, so feel free to change direction or, you know, tell me something different. But what I did was I modeled it after Collett's, moved the salary, as y'all directed on June twenty-fifth, up to that of a former city clerk, and it provides for a car allowance of fifty dollars per pay period. The other benefits remain the same. It also provides for, same as Collett, to return to the assistant city clerk position if she so chooses, or the commission so chooses. And also the performance evaluation, this is something we hadn't talked about, but if you're going to consider Collett's on December, this, the one meeting in December we have, I inserted into this, they would review, you all would review the clerk's contract at the January eighth, twenty twenty city commission meeting. So, I'm open to any objections, changes that you need, otherwise, we could take a motion on this contract.
Comments on that contract?
I have one. What I would like to see us do is to have a separate meeting to discuss both contracts at the same time. And that way, neither one of the individuals feel like they're being singled out or whatever. At a special meetings, before we actually get into the negotiations probably, to discuss what we would like to see, or what our thoughts are collectively, you know, we could do that and say, well, is there anything specific that you're looking at, or specific that, you know, somebody else is looking at, or is there a way to tweak this or tweak that? Otherwise, it gets kind of what you just said on your last comment, is we don't have anything before us, and then we're, at one meeting, we're here to approve a contract that we just saw a couple of days before that. And we don't have any idea where the thought process was into that, or where we were going with that. So, since they're both going to be due around the same time, I would recommend that we do them both at a separate meeting. Otherwise, we're going to be at nine thirty, ten o'clock at night, discussing, I think, two very important issues. And we should have some discussion amongst ourselves prior to that contract being drafted. My thoughts.
So, you lead up next, Commissioner Colleti?
Would you propose to do that during the December-January dates, or two months ahead of time?
I would leave that up to whatever the scheduling would allow. I know December's going to be tough to do, there's only one meeting, and I don't, I don't think Kelly would be upset if we did hers earlier. I don't think Collett would be upset if we did his a couple of meetings later. So, you know, Collett's is kind of set, so I think we should have it before we did his. We're now discussing Kelly's as whether it's going to be a six-month or a four-month and twenty days, or, you know, whatever. So, whatever works out time-wise, I think that we can have a separate meeting, whether it's an earlier meeting prior to a council meeting, or we do a separate day or something like that.
So, maybe a broader point of, you're thinking weeks, you know, week or two, or, you know, meeting before type timeframe, not a month or two before the final?
Right, yeah.
Okay. So, we'll iron out the timing, let's talk about maybe the general concept. Any other thoughts on, not only what he's proposed, but the actual item we have in front of us tonight, it's the broader contract, the timing of the view is one specific element of that that his vice mayor has brought up.
Would they be executive sessions?
No.
Nope. Only the union stuff is during negotiation.
Unless they want to form a union.
So, well, I just will need formal direction because, right, it is included in this contract.
Any other comments on the, on the contract, except, accepting the date?
I like it as written.
Okay, one thing I had, this pains me to say it, but it's tough, but, the, when would, when do normal pay raises go into effect? Or just your average that?
If the budget, if the budget includes a general wage increase, it would go into effect October one.
October first, okay. So, at every company I've been with, there's usually some kind of a cutoff date where employees hired before a certain date, or receiving some kind of a promotion or something after a certain date, they're not eligible for anything that happens during that kind of cycle. So, you know, if I get a promotion to, like in this case, a few days before the pay raise, you just figure all that out at once, and you don't layer that on top of it. So, I'm not trying to take money out of anybody's pocket, I'm just saying as a best practice, I think we should probably consider that when we go to negotiate that final contract rate. And so, I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that, or if it's just going to be me being the Grinch tonight?
No, I could support you on that. Other places have done this, the first pay period in the, of the new year, I think, according to Personnel Policy Manual, managers kind of get all of their vacation time upfront at beginning, October one. So, I don't, you know, I agree with that, that that's something that probably we need to look at and discuss, and maybe even...
Yeah. So, I guess as of now, as the contract is written, she'll be at the new pay rate through when we negotiate the contract.
Tell the first, the first pay period of this career.
But doesn't it say that she'll receive any things given by?
Correct. But it, so that only applies to the salary, all the other benefits remain the same. So, we have a weird, you know, Collett was already a department head, so he got his vacation the same way. So, in Kelly's situation, with the direction to leave, the other benefit's the same. You know, if you address this in January, you would want to go back and look at either doing a retro, you know, giving her the bank like she would have accrued as a department head on October first.
Yeah, but I guess my, to simplify, my thought would be, whatever terms we've got outlined in the contract should run through the course of the contract, regardless of what else happens during the term of the contract. So, if there's a general pay raise given or something like that, this contract kind of runs over top of all of that, independent of all of it. And then in January, whenever we re-up this contract, at that point, we can choose to leave the pay as is, or make some adjustment, or whatever it is, we'll address it in the next contract. That would be my desire, I don't know what the society commission is, but it just feels like the cleanest way to handle it, to me. So, and feels fair.
We're talking, we're talking about the contract proposal now.
The interim.
Sixty-eight thousand, right? So, here, I look at this a couple of different ways, and I, when I look at it two different ways, I, I think I see it a little differently. We'll bring her to what the city clerk was making. The city clerk was, and that was roughly sixty-eight thousand. If the city clerk was here continuing, the city clerk would be then getting whatever the raises that we approve at the budget time. So, the, that's one way of looking at it. The other way of looking at it is, you simply change the amount now. you simply change the amount now that we anticipate. Or when we looked, if I recall correctly, the, the city clerks in the area, we were on the lower spectrum of that. So the bottom line is, if we're looking at the $68,000 for the past, for the past year, and then we're looking at giving a raise to employees, the bottom line is I think that that raise should be tacked on to that 68. Whether we do it upfront or do it later and then go back retroactively, I still think that the 68 should get that raise that the employee would get for that position.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not going to, you know, die on that hill. I just, I think we, if, if we think that the pay is out of line with peers and, you know, if there's other considerations that we want to choose to negotiate a final contract rate and bring that on to peers or market or whatever, whatever we think, you know, there's a lot of factors to that. You know, I was just going to try to keep those two separate. But again, it's not one to die on the hill. I'm just saying everywhere I've ever been, it's kind of been the practices. There's usually a cutoff date. Any changes after that, you become ineligible for kind of the generic stuff. It's just what I'm used to. So. But it's really nothing. As far as the timing, I'll just chime in on the timing real quick. You know, would it be, I would prefer to do January rather than December. It'd just be my, my preference.
For both of them?
Yeah.
I'd rather get it done sooner than later, but I can, if you want to get it done after the holidays as opposed to in the middle of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of, it's just a thought process. Just.
Yeah, because a couple, meeting or so ago, you know, I mentioned to you that we probably should have these conversations in, in the beginning of the year so in the budget process. So then if we're thinking about adjusting raises, that we make that a part of the adjusting raises, adjusting salaries, we do that in order so that we have proper time to budget for those things. We're going to have budget presentations the next couple of meetings. And we're talking about already setting the 1920 budget process. And hypothetically, if you doubled Collett's salary, poor John's going to be pulling his hair out and his beard. So, you know, we need to, at the, like you said, at the beginning of the year, we need to have a discussion. And we need to say, well, where do we, where are we now? Where do we want to be, you know, at October, at the new budget year so that we can plan accordingly for that? I think it's, as managers, I mean, I think that's, we require that of everybody else.
Yeah.
You know, so why are we not doing it?
I agree. I think the, the overall timing should be, should be adjusted.
Yeah.
Whether or not we can get there. I would also be okay with doing it a lot sooner. I just, December's an awkward time to have these conversations. You never want to have performance and evaluation conversations in December. It's just my, I don't know of any businesses that do it. It's just a terrible time to do it.
Collett's is January, right?
No, it's December, the one meeting in December.
So would, I mean, what would, we'd need to.
So we need to do it like October, November?
Amend it?
Or in January.
October, November.
So we got somebody supporting doing it way sooner?
I agree with that.
Which the contracts allow us to do. We can do it sooner. So we want to do it sooner. I would, I'm okay with sooner. I think trying to, I mean, we talked about the deficiencies. There's an open chair over there. Sooner we can make some decisions, the better. So. I'm hearing resounding support for October, November.
Yes.
So maybe reviewing in the last meeting of October and, or maybe the first meeting of October. And the second meeting of October, we wrap it up. Does that work for everybody?
I'm comfortable.
November gets into Thanksgiving time off, all that kind of stuff. I just.
So is the vision, you all would talk the second meeting in September and give direction in terms of whether we're setting, setting a contract negotiation session? Or if you just tell, tell me right at the dais what needs to go in there? Probably needs to be contract negotiation, a, a public meeting scheduled sometime between September 24th and October 8th with the goal of bringing a contract back October 22nd? Does that sound?
I think it could be one of those meet, do they require two meetings?
Well, one, y'all have to talk. Then there'd have to be the negotiation. And then you'd have to approve the contract. So we could conceivably do it all on one day, but we may need, well, actually, I would need time after the negotiation to. Yeah.
I would prefer to have that first discussion in October.
The first one.
Yeah, just to give, to give direction as to what we're going to do.
In October.
So back it up to October 8th, have a negotiation sometime in the next, well, potentially a couple of weeks. And then bring something back November 12th?
Final meeting in October or the first?
First.
Very, I think he was saying that, very first negotiation meeting in October, not have that in September.
Oh, I thought y'all wanted to talk about which direction you were going to take in September 1st.
October.
October.
October. Okay. So first meeting in October. So essentially, we're talking about three meetings. And depending on how quick we can turn around, October 8th with contract final, November 5th with a negotiation in between those two dates.
Yeah, something like that.
For both.
A separate meeting though for the discussion.
Right. So the discussion will be October 8th.
Well, okay.
Well, don't we have to have a first, we've got two readings on it? No?
No.
So the 8th would be discussion.
Doesn't need a reading.
Yeah. Okay. Is the 8th a Tuesday?
It's a, yeah. Or you could choose any other day for that matter.
Yeah. That's fine.
The Tuesday? You could do it at 5 o'clock or?
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
And then if we had the goal of November 12th for a contract approval potentially, we would schedule the negotiation sometime between those two dates.
That's a month apart.
Yeah, I thought we were trying to get this wrapped up in October.
In October.
I don't want to go into November. Well, we could.
Well, I'm just thinking about logistically, if you have October 8th discussion, you don't, you're only giving like a week. I mean, I guess we could do negotiation. It's a quick turnaround to negotiate and draft the contract to get it back. You know, the October 22nd agenda would publish October 16th. So we'd just have a few days to negotiate. If you, if that's doable, we can make it happen.
First in October, then the first meeting in November.
I'd also say we could have a separate, I mean, it doesn't have to fall on that.
Tuesday.
That is Tuesdays. We could also have something on October, you know, 30th or 7th or, you know, we could, we could.
But goal would be get it all done in October.
That's what I'm hearing. And I support that.
Yeah.
Figure what we're doing and move in a direction.
And then I'll just bring back a little simple, Collett, are you okay with that? I'll bring back a little one-page addendum for his contract on consent. I need formal approval of an amendment to his, yeah, yeah.
I'm saying it's his. And then on this one, we'll, we'll put that in a motion, right, to amend that.
Right. This one hasn't been executed. His has. So.
All right.
Thank you.
So I think my idea died. Vice Mayor's idea lived on. We've got this language. So to have a motion to approve the contract as presented, amending the timing language to reflect what was just discussed. Is that an adequate motion before somebody makes anything?
And it provides for the general wage increase if there is one October.
As drafted, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second.
Want me to call? Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Mayor Owen? No.
All right. This meeting is adjourned. Missed it by an hour.